I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Board, the meeting of June 26, 2012, to order. My name is Sammy Baghdadi. I'm the Chair. To my right is Michael Batista, Joe DiStefano, and our Board of Selectmen liaison, Andy Rojas, our staff person, Jeffrey Wheeler, and Carl Haglund will be joining us shortly when we do address the Cushing Village Continued Public Hearing. So, first matter is Wellington Rooftop Unit. And if the Wellington School Building Committee is prepared, you may make your presentation. What I am going to do while you are preparing is have the Vice Chair and Secretary read the public meeting notice.
Notice of Public Meeting by the Planning Board on Request to Modified Design and Site Plan Approval. The Belmont Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June 26, 2012, 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Auditorium, 455 Concord Ave., to consider a request from the Town of Belmont Wellington School Building Committee to propose solutions to the rooftop unit noise issues for the Wellington Elementary School, 121 Orchard Street. Planning Board.
Now, just by way of summary, the Wellington School Building Committee did come to us several months ago requesting a relocation, a movement of one of the rooftop units because it didn't comply with code and it was very difficult to service. And we had granted that request, that amendment to the site plan. And the remaining issue, though, was the noise of the rooftop units and its effect on the neighbors and the neighborhood. And so now the building committee is coming before us with some proposed mitigation measures in order to help reduce that noise impact. Mr. Lovallo, would you?
Shall I begin?
Please, but you have to speak into the mic.
Yes, okay.
And the mic is portable. You can remove it if you wish to walk around.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Board. My name is Bill Lovallo. I'm a member of the Wellington.
Want to speak into the microphone, please? You can raise it or?
Take it out.
Take, take.
Take it out.
Thank you. It's on.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the Board. My name is Bill Lovallo, a member of the Wellington Building Committee. With me tonight is Eric Smith, another member, and Pat Bruch, Vice Chair of the Wellington Building Committee. As you said, we're back here. Our last time in front of you was in February, I believe, and we were here to discuss some changes that we needed to make to the Wellington School. Just a little backtracking, we started construction right after January 2010. We ordered the contract with Skanska USA. Their mission was to build the school that we had designed and to get the students in their seats by September 7, 2011. They accomplished that task, but they had a few things to finish after September 7. And right now, given the summer break, we're starting some of that work, complete the project, and obtain our final certificate of occupancy. So when we were back here several months ago, we discussed one of the things that we had to do, which was to move one of the rooftops, as you said, approximately 26 inches. That rooftop unit was on the southern, I should say, the northern end of the building. The northern end is towards School Street. And we moved that with your permission. And one of the things that the move required us to do was to raise it 28 inches. And in raising that, you now see that unit, especially from the south side, which would be Orchard Street. Our intention is to screen that this summer, so you won't see that. So there'll be visual screening that looks like the remainder of the rooftop screening. But as you mentioned, we were tasked, when we last left, to address some of the concerns of the neighbors regarding the noise coming from the roof, particularly on the southern end, that end that faces Orchard Street. We met with the neighbors. Prior to our meeting with you, we had some passionate, I guess, discussions about how it's affecting the neighborhood, the noise that is from the rooftop units. If I could backtrack, some of that noise was during construction when the contractor had the units running 24/7, full blast. We've since now taken control of that operation as of February this year, and the school department and the school operations has turned that off predominantly at the nighttime and certainly has been able to balance that a lot better with the occupancy of the school. Now, in that, we've educated the school department and their operations with training. We've given them controls that allow them to turn it on and off, remote via web-based programming. And so the building is very smart. The building is very automated, and the ability to control that operation is at their hands. I will say that the building committee themselves is responsible for the design of the building and turning it over to the school department. So we're not necessarily the ones that are directing the school department on the operation and use of the building. But we give them assistance when they need it regarding support from the contractor or training or what have you that the contractor can provide. So moving ahead to the matters that were discussed at our last meeting, this Orchard Street area was experiencing noise when the rooftop units were running. Predominantly at night was a concern, early in the morning when they were turned on for the school, for school day activities. We left here saying that we would do a couple of things. One is that we would test, we would send out our acoustic consultant, that is Ascentech, Bob Behrens is here, he's the engineer on that, and take readings in the neighborhood. We'd do that in the middle of the night, when everything was quiet, when the school was shut down, when the units on the roof were shut down, and ideally to get what we call the background readings or baseline readings for the neighborhood. We would also then look at opportunities to improve the noise and reduce the levels that come into the neighborhood. We would do that by looking at things like changing the screening or doing things to the rooftop units. And as, and in that effort, we would price those changes out. We would look at what seems reasonable to do versus what seems to be very costly and cost prohibitive, and we would come back to you with some recommendations that we think would improve the conditions in the neighborhood. I think we've mentioned this a few times, and I don't want to really dwell on it, but the building is in compliance with the Belmont Noise Bylaw. It has been, it continues to be. That clearly wasn't the issue. The issue was, can we do better? I think that, not to stress it, the building was designed and permitted with no variances or with no special permitting. It was, well, I should say it was done with no variances or anything that was in violation of any of the state or local bylaws. So that was the goal from the very beginning, to work within bylaws and zoning requirements. So, the testing that was done occurred, Bob, you might help me out here, during the evenings of what?
It's in the report, sorry.
It's in the report, but it's generally, it was somewhere around March.
Right, and certainly with still cool weather, air conditioning weren't on.
So it was, it was in March, and it was still very cold. It was a 30-degree night, so there was no air conditioning or anything going on. It's a fairly still night, so we didn't have rustling of any, anything that would create some problems with the readings. And those readings were found in, probably Bob Behrens will come up in a little while, to be very, very low. So they were extremely low. And the Noise Bylaw in Belmont talks about changing the decibel readings by 5 dB or up to 45, whichever is the loudest. And so 5 dB from something very low is still something very low. But it also gave a maximum that we were allowed to go up to, and we certainly didn't exceed that. But we knew that we wanted to do something better for the neighborhood. So after taking all these readings, we started to look at which units participated in creating the noise in the Orchard Street area, and we found that it was the south cluster. It was the cluster closest to that neighborhood, which made sense, but Bob and his group did that through some testing and working with the school department, turning things on and off. So the documentation that you see in front of you does list that, and the board behind you has the 18 receptors or locations throughout the neighborhood, and especially in areas that were in front of or near neighbors' houses. So that we were getting real-time readings. They were taken at the second-floor level using a story pole, so they were really right into the bedroom zones that the noise would come. Once those readings were taken, Bob went back, he looked at some conditions for the screen wall, as probably a lot of us did walking up there, and realized there are some things that we could do right away that should make improvements. Those being infill the opening that's on the south side of the screen wall. That's option number one that we looked at. Option number two was to fill the screen wall or extend the screen wall down to the roof. There's about a 24-inch gap today. We're proposing to push that all the way down to the roof or within 3-inch of the roof for drainage. Option number three that we considered was to raise the roof screening by 6 feet. So today it's at 10 feet. We'd say flip it up to 16 feet, essentially adding a whole story up there. Option number four we looked at was to replace the units altogether on that side, three large air handling units. And option number five was to add baffling to the units. In other words, some type of acoustical treatments to the units on the exterior to muffle some of the sounds. We priced each one of those up. We found option 1 and 2 to be in the $10,000 to $15,000 range each. We found options 3 and 4 to be in the quarter of a million dollar range each. Actually, number 4, that replaces all 4, well, all 3 RTUs is a quarter of a million dollars times 3, so that's 3/4 of a million dollars if we do that. And option 5 was in the range of about $50,000 to treat those 5 units. We asked Bob what the contributions were for each one of those. Ascentech came back and gave us some readings, and if you look at the chart that's behind you, the board, you'll see that we were able to achieve some substantial reductions in the noise with options 1 and 2. So I'm going to walk up there. Some of the, some of the higher readings were taken right here across. There's a school right, right here, M and N. Those are some of the higher readings that were taken. The first number represents the loud readings taken before we considered acoustical treatment. The second is where we might be. We anticipate a drop in 4 or 5 dB. That's right across the street. As you move away, you'll start to see that the changes are very little. Certainly on School Street, you don't see much of a change because we were addressing anything over there. But as you start to look at these numbers, you'll see they all range around mid-30s, mid-to-upper 30s, and that's a substantial change from the requirement of 45 dB. So we brought that down somewhat to mid-to-upper 30s. We didn't, we didn't consider options 3 and 4, which is to build a whole-story screen wall 6 feet up, to be very beneficial long-term. It's going to have major impact visually. It's going to be very costly. It's got a lot of structural steel that's required to brace, brace a wall that high. It's basically a whole-story sale up there. And we didn't consider number 4, which is to replace 3 of rooftops being very viable. Again, we just finished with brand-new rooftop units up there. That's a substantial cost, and they would have to be custom units. We did consider option 5 to be a good option, which is to look at the units we have today and come up with some baffling for the condensers on the top, for the exhaust air on discharge side, and for furnaces that kick on in winter time. It's hard to quantify those. We couldn't really get good numbers simply because we know we can make it better, but there's not technical data available that would allow the engineers to actually put a number on that. So intuitively, you say if you baffle, it's going to be better at the source, but they don't have any test, the manufacturer doesn't have anything. So we couldn't give you any information on that, only to say that if we do that, it's going to be better than what we show here. So at this time, the building committee is making a recommendation to move forward with options, as we said, number 1, number 2, and number 5. Number 1 being to infill the south screen wall. Number 2 to, what I call, add skirt to the bottom of the screen wall facing Orchard Street. And number 5 to add baffling to the 3 rooftop units that are on the south cluster adjacent to Orchard Street. As I wrap up my, my presentation here, I want to say that the building committee is eager to get started this summer simply because the school is vacant, other than the rec programs that are running. So simply from 600 students plus faculty down to somewhere in the 150 range. So it'll be better served that we do this work this summer. And a lot of the work will be up at the roof, and we feel uncomfortable proceeding with that work without some affirmative response from the board that we're heading in the right direction. We have a building permit that is not closed out. It's under what we call temporary certificate of occupancy. And one of the conditions, as you cited last meeting, was that we return to the board with means to approve the acoustics, and we're looking for your affirmation that what we're doing is, is going to allow us to get the final certificate of occupancy for the building.
Okay. If I may ask a few questions. Number 1, you're going in the right direction. Anything that reduces the decibel level is going in the right direction. Now, filling in the gaps, you said would cost about $10,000 to $15,000?
Each, yes.
Okay.
So, so option 1, we have, we received conceptual design, construction estimates from Skanska, the contractor. Number 1 was $10,000. Number 2 was $15,000. So combined, the 25, for the 1 and 2.
Plus 50.
Plus 50 for number 5. 75. That doesn't include, so, so you asked a question, and I'll answer it to say that right now, we are committing approximately $150,000 for what we propose. The hard cost of construction, we have the contractors' costs for, for running the job, too. There's some costs for the general contractor, structure manager. And then we have the design consultant's costs, both from Ascentech, we've got the architect, we've got structural engineer, as well as the mechanical engineer, all having to be paid for some of their services to guide us through this process.
Okay. But for options 1, 2, and 5, you're saying the cost is going to be approximately 55?
75, hard cost.
Bill, on options 1, 2, and 5, the numbers that you show on page 4 or 5 of the diagram up here, is that, so that's only, that's taken into account that if you, 1 and 2, it doesn't have 5 in there?
Correct.
I just want to be clear on that.
Correct.
And what do you think? I mean, if you were to do, get a guesstimate in terms of, like, if you were to do 1, 2, and 5, is there a type, do you have a guesstimate on what that would accomplish?
I'm going to ask Bob Behrens from Ascentech to join me up here. Question that we're getting from the technical side.
Yeah, I'm Bob Behrens from Ascentech in Fresh Pond, Cambridge. And for record, I live at Cottage Street, right, just north of the Wellington School. The things that we're proposing to look for, look at on the individual units will probably take the units down maybe on the order of, say, 3 to 5 dB additional from, from the units themselves. That will only really be realized at locations M and N and L. The further away you get from the school, the more the rest of the world contributes, the more the other equipment in the Wellington contributes. So we're really only addressing sort of the sore thumb equipment that's right across the street from, you know, John Kerry's house.
So, yeah, but what, what you're saying is basically, here's the source right here. So as you radiate out from the source in larger and larger circles?
Please, closer to the mic. Thank you.
As you attempt, so as you move out further and further, what we find is that the, the effects are attenuated, and they just, they just drop off. That's what you're saying. So the, the receptors that are most noted are M, N, probably L, K, O, and P in this range with the south cluster.
Is that where the majority of the complaints are coming from, 70%?
We have, we have received comments. We have, we have received comments all the way out to S.
Okay. But I guess, I, how it is. What will happen if you baffle in addition to 1, 2, and 5? I'm trying to figure out what, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it's only going to affect a few houses. What's the effect going to be on those few houses? An additional 3 to 4?
I would say probably an additional 3 to 4, maybe at M and N, maybe 2 and, 2 to 3 dB at, say, K and L and O. So again, the further away you get from the units, the less benefit this additional, you know, the, the looking at number 5 will be.
Okay. I understand. Okay. Thank you. And that's off a low number to the.
Right, that's correct.
Any, any other questions from the board? Yes, please.
Just to go back, just to the beginning for one second. The whole hearing started because you needed a sign-off on the relocation of the original rooftop unit. It had nothing to do, noise came after that. But did you actually get the sign-off for the rooftop unit reworking?
You mean the sign-off from the state? They have accepted its position and its configuration.
So that proved effective, that's not part of it, yeah?
It is. We have one more piece to do, which is to modify the screen wall with an access panel. We'll do that when we add the visual screening on that side of the building.
And I'm just curious, and I know you're not going with option, whatever it was, to replace the rooftop units, but did you look at any residual value for the rooftops that would have been removed had you replaced them?
So in the town of Belmont, we just replaced the high school rooftop units. Channery is fairly new, and our other buildings don't have those.
For sale on the open market? I mean, is there any?
We don't really think that there's, we asked that question, and they're fairly custom to begin with. They're not, it's just not something you pull off the shelf. They have particulars to the school and the building, and our mechanical engineer didn't think that we would really get much for it. And when you're bargaining, I will tell you, say this, this is a public bid project with what we call filed sub-bidder on the mechanical side. He is not a happy person right now with us, just because we've been holding a very strong line with him. So to ask him to give us money back for something, by law, either we go through him or we have to publicly bid this from scratch all over again. So both conditions were not favorable, plus the cost. Thank you.
Okay. One more question. Now, the 150, then, it would cost to implement these mitigation measures, those are within your budget? You do have those funds?
We, we reserve those funds. In our budget, we reserve the funds. So it is public funds, but we, as a committee, we feel they're reasonable and they're achieving good value for, for the cost. As we start to look at other options, for instance, replacing the units, the value doesn't seem to be as effective.
Where would you get those funds? I assume you don't have those available.
We cannot afford 3/4 of a million dollars. Is that what you're asking? Right. We, we would, we would say that that's probably something that if it was needed, would rise to maybe a selectman's level and go to town meeting for some type of funding or additional funds. We wouldn't be, it's, it, the committee right now doesn't, after looking at this, isn't in favor of proposing that.
But it would take additional action, is what you're saying? That's not within the control?
It's beyond our resources.
Of, of the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Just to kind of, maybe a little off the wall there. I just get the baffling idea, and it's got an aftermarket baffling probably of the screening or something between the units and the screening. Is there an add-on from unit manufacturer for some kind of noise mitigation inside the units? You know, a lining of the units that they offer?
Not at this point. Had the units been designed to be quieter than they are now, we could, you know, there's a, they could have been, silencing could have been put inside it, for example. Physically, there's probably not enough room on the roof to have done that. So, I mean, anything you put inside the box makes the box bigger, and it's pretty tight up there now. So, you know, that's something that, sure, at design level, it could have been done. It could have been, at least looked at more seriously. At this point, it's, that's really not an option.
One other question. What would be, do, do we have numbers here? I've been looking through. Do we have numbers that would tell us what the dB level would be if you did replace the units with option? I think it's 4.
We don't have numbers, no. It would be hard, we would be hard-pressed to get units substantially quieter than this and still get them fit on the roof with the hole in the roof already. So it's, again, had we started from scratch and allowed more real estate on the roof, things may have been quieter than they are now. But I think at this point, replacing the units would not provide the kind of reduction that everybody would want to see for spending that kind of money.
So option 4 really isn't a?
So option 4, just let me explain this, is a custom unit, designed right from scratch to fit the openings that are in the roof today through the concrete slab. The space that's up there, that's required, and we want to move the roof screening around, so that's to fit within the space, has to have the access and, and controls necessary to do what the design was originally intended to. And at the same time, this is what, have some acoustic treatment somehow crammed into it and all fit up there in a cluster of 3 happy rooftop units. That's one of the cost implications. That's why the contractor came back and said, if you want us to customize a unit, it will cost a tremendous amount of money, and we, it's off the, it's not off the shelf. So there's no data to see that. We would custom build a unit to fit that.
But it's $250,000, and we don't know what the number is that would be achieving for spending the $250,000, correct?
Correct. So that is, we'd be working with Bob to set a level spec to see if the manufacturer could meet that through a custom unit. It would be a performance spec, is what we call it.
Okay.
We don't, we didn't go anywhere further down that way.
Okay.
There's a lot of people that would be out of our support.
Andy, do you have a question?
I do. Excuse me. Bill, in the, in the June 19, excuse me, letter from the Wellington Building Committee to the Planning Board that has this chart on it, you know, the numbers shown are the new and projected DBE based on this mitigate, the elements we're talking about. In the Ascentech letter of June 25, 12, where it shows ambient conditions with no equipment running in cool and warm weather conditions, where does that fit in to the cool, it's March. Where does that fit into the cool or warm weather scenario? How can we compare those numbers to the ambient existing non-equipment numbers? Do we compare it to the cool weather or to the warm weather number?
I'm going to let Bob answer that, but first, I want to put the context of that second letter in play here. So in preparation for this meeting tonight, we were asked to, if we had an opportunity to evaluate what the warm weather baseline readings would be, you know, back in March and so forth, we didn't have that opportunity. But in preparation for this meeting in June, we said, well, we'll, we'll find an opportunity possibly, and we'll take that and make some readings. So there was an effort put forth last Friday during the warm spell to go back to those same 18 receptors and take middle-of-night basetime, baseline reading about the rooftop units in Wellington operating. That, you'll, you see from your, the report there, that that is a dramatic change in some locations to the baseline readings in the middle of winter. And that's all that report demonstrates. It doesn't try to tie what we're proposing into what's out there today. Because if we went out there today and did another set of readings, and then did the mitigate, did the mitigation, did another set of readings in the middle of July, those minimum values wouldn't be the same because the baseline's down. And maybe at this point, I have to turn it over to the more technical side and see.
Well, I think that, what, what, well, let me try and rephrase what I'm interested in, is what's the delta between the ambient noise level and the projected new baffled noise level that the residents can expect? So is it, you know, if I look at these numbers, it seems like in the worst-case scenario, it's 10 or 11 dB. In the best-case scenario, it's 5, 4, 5 dB. Is that correct? I mean, is that the delta between?
Well, I think you, you've got to realize that, that there's two. Well, I think you've got to realize that there's two things going on here. One is that in cool weather, nobody's air conditioning is on. So, it's, the difference between the background, non-Wellington noise level in the whole neighborhood really changes substantially between wintertime, when there's no air conditioning, and summertime, when I would say probably seventy-five percent of the houses have got at least a window unit. And when I went out last Friday night, I saw very few houses that didn't have a window unit. The background level, just walking around the neighborhood, was some ten to twenty dB higher, just because the air conditioning, everybody's air conditioning was running, than it was during the wintertime when nothing's running. So, in terms of what the Wellington equipment would do, you've got to add what the background is doing to what the equipment, how much noise the equipment is making. We're really targeting the wintertime condition because that's when people, one, people complain because the furnace on the units kicks in and makes a pretty tonal noise, and that's one of the things we're really addressing. That won't happen at all in the summertime, and the one reason that people are so aware of this is the tremendous increase over this very, very quiet background level that occurs during the wintertime. During the summertime, those numbers that I measured last Friday night, our equipment is going to be probably around that or below that. So, we won't see any change in the summertime levels from what, you know, when everybody's window air conditioning is running. So, we're really looking at the, back to your question about the delta, the delta, the big difference is going to be noticeable in the wintertime when, without the Wellington equipment, there's nothing going on. And when the equipment kicks in, you hear it. In the summertime, you know, your next-door neighbor's got a window air conditioning going, you're not going to hear a huge difference when the Wellington unit kicks in or not. Does that make some sense?
Yep. And to add to that, you know, when I look at the data, it looks like that with your options one or two, one and two mitigation, realizing it's a quiet neighborhood, but that's what the residents are accustomed to, that would still result in a difference of about ten decibels from the ambient.
Probably not going to be that much. I think really, realistically, it's going to be more like five dB at the, right across the street from the, oh, I'm talking about improvement from where we are. You're talking about...
Yes. I'm talking about from...
Right, you're right there.
Okay. But with the additional mitigation, the baffling, that could be reduced probably to six or seven.
Yeah, they're around, yeah, they're about there. Yeah, the numbers on that, and people can come up and look at it, the numbers in the report are really the levels with the Wellington's equipment running now, and what we expect it to be running, how much noise it makes after we do the barrier modifications.
Right. And I think your air conditioning study showed that in the summer with air conditioning units, decibels are as high as forty-five, forty-six.
They're up, upwards actually of over fifty, down a number, location A, so...
Just a clarification. These numbers, M was forty-two to seven, that's based on winter conditions.
Correct.
And potentially with the last option, thirty-seven, maybe it's thirty-three.
Right, yes.
When there's no white...
Right. Last Friday, location M was around forty-two to begin with, with nothing running from the Wellington.
So, if you will, summertime, neighbors are kind of canceling out any noise that might come from Wellington if the units were running.
Any further questions at this point from the board? Residents? And anybody have any comments, any questions? Please come to the mic, identify yourself, your address, and you are welcome to provide your comments.
Monica Sainsbury, I live up north Colonial Terrace, which is the furthest one. It's number S there. And my concern is, okay, they're going to be spending one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on this equipment. What guarantee we have about the vibration noise, which is a lot different than just noise? They did all these readings on the outside. It's different, actually, inside the house. There's vibration noise. So, it's pretty, it's, I know to most people, they may think, "Oh, no big deal." If you live there that close, it is a big deal.
Do you feel vibration?
Vibration, yes. When that was going on in the winter, yes. And one of the comments was from, I think, Mr. Tossi or something, saying, "Well, it's just such a quiet neighborhood. That's why people hear the noise." Well, yes, that's why we live there, because we like the quiet neighborhood.
You're saying you also feel the noise?
We also feel, yes. You can ask any of the people who live around.
Vibration, is it your window? Is it vibrating?
They're close. It's inside the house, that you feel a vibration going through your body.
Vibration going through your body?
Yes. So, my question is, with all the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that's going to be spent on the, is it gonna really work? What if it doesn't work? I know you're going to be writing off on it and saying, you're going to give them the permit, and it's all done. We are washing our hands of it, probably. I want to know, if this doesn't work, do we have, can we come back?
Well, as a board, we have not washed our hands.
I know, not yet.
No, we've actually been more involved than, than we probably should be, but we are a resident-oriented board. Any response? Vibration?
We have not...
Please, to the mic. Is that the first you've heard of?
No, that, we have not made any vibration measurements, per se, inside anybody's house. So, I can't really speak to Monica's issue. We're fairly confident from a technical standpoint that there is no vibration that's transmitted from the unit down through the structure of the building into the ground, down Orchard Street, and up into her, into her house on Colonial Terrace.
I would think that the inhabitants of the school would feel that kind of a vibration if that were to get...
Can we take vibration readings? I think one of the things that we're looking at is the noise from the burner, which is a very tonal, sort of a "hmm" type of sound, which may be the kind of sound that Monica's complaining about. It may be, you know, maybe felt as vibration. That's one of the things we will be looking at in terms of addressing the individual components that make noise on the units themselves, so, but we don't...
And S on your chart is one of the further distances. So, I could imagine what R, O, N, and M must be feeling. Okay.
Well, we've asked this question to the school, the principal, directly, because if there is vibration going to S, wouldn't there be vibration or disruption within the school on the second floor directly under the unit? And she said more times, and more than a couple of times when we've asked her this question, because Monica's brought that up before, you know, is it, is it affecting the school students' your teaching ability? And the answer was no. But also, I will say, we've asked her, is the noise affecting the students' the teaching ability for them to carry on their programs? And the answer is no. So, I'm not dismissing Monica's comments just by saying the school doesn't have problems inside, because they're able to teach inside while apparently sound is traveling in the neighborhood at a level that could be disruptive. But vibration, as Bob was saying, our only explanation to that, and we haven't been in Monica's house, could possibly be the first. And that is one of our baffling efforts that we plan on doing.
There's more of vibration probably than it is vibration.
John Cherry, one-twenty-four Orchard Street. This was not something I wanted to talk about. It's a digression to get into vibration, but I've been in the school, I've been in, under the area where those units in question are, and I don't see the rooms used. And I, I think the first line of attack with noise problems is often to pathologize and dismiss. I'm not saying this committee has, but, you know, I asked whether they were going to take C-weighted measurements to maybe try to quantify some of these. Sometimes it's hard to articulate what these things are. I don't feel like I'm vibrating in the house, but during trying to sleep, there is a quality which I don't have the language to describe, which is quite disruptive. It has improved with some of the ability to control the night mode, so they have been improvements, and we appreciate that committee's working on this. But, and I don't know if Ms. Wagner would be a good person to consult relative to that question, because she has vested interest in the school, she's only committing. So, I just want to put that out there relative to that issue of vibration. And the rooms under those units in question, I've been up there, my children went to the school, I don't see them in use, the classrooms.
Okay, any other comments?
This one, yeah.
Oh, yes, please.
John, I can tell you the specific use of each room underneath the units, and maybe at the time, there was not an activity. Under the south cluster, where the units are, you have, you have the art room, and then you have, as it moves towards the center, you have the multi-resource room, we call it the library, it's the library. And then on the other side of School Street, you have the other end of the library, and you have the music wing or the music room. Certainly, that probably has some concerns if it was loud acoustics. And then you have corridors under portions of the two. But there's only probably three or four rooms, and if you want to get into this, but I'll be need to, that aren't being used because that's the expansion. In other words, the last track that's following up from kindergarten versus graded, by the way things are going, probably in about three or four years, every room will be populated in that school. But all the rooms are used other than three classrooms, and those are in the classroom wings, and in the classroom wings, they are, there's no rooftop units overdose.
No. Mike, go ahead.
Oh.
Okay. If it's related, if it's related to the vibration, then I'd suggest...
Bob Kennedy, eleven Lorimer Road. I'm not familiar with the problem here, but I am an architect, and I just want to make an observation to you that might help with the vibration problem. Normally, these rooftop units are mounted with some kind of cushioning, which might explain why the building itself is not feeling this vibration. But there is a correlation between vibration and noise. Vibration creates waves of, waves through the air, just like noise does. And technically, I don't know that there's a big difference between vibration and noise. But what the neighbor may be feeling is the low-frequency sound that you commonly get in traffic when you have somebody with a boombox in a, in a car next to you. It'll make your windows buzz in your car, and you can very much feel it, and you feel it as vibration. It comes from low-frequency sound, and when you do sound abatement on these units, you may well be able to absorb that low-frequency sound. I think, I think you may want to be looking at sound rather than technically vibration here.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret Waters, and I live at one-oh-six Orchard Street, which is O on the map. And just had one quick correction. I know that there were some changes done to the south cluster of units, and some relief felt directly across the street, but where I live at letter O, we're affected by the north units, and those are still loud, and we've been hearing them even on these super-hot nights. They're humidity controlled. So, my question that comes out of that is, have we tested all four seasons? I know they haven't really commissioned the cooling and dehumidification system, so that's a concern I have, is that we're looking at the furnaces, but we need to also look at all four seasons and test all four seasons. So, the other question I had for you is about the option three has not gotten a lot of airplay tonight, which is adding six feet to the height of the screening, which somebody said in one of the reports would give us a fair amount of relief for sound, because my baseline to current readings at letter O is up ten decibels. So, if you could spend, what is it, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on screening, I did a back-of-the-envelope guesstimate on the assessment of all the houses represented with letters here, and it's fifteen-point-two million dollars. So, if all of us have spent that much money to live here, would the town not have, on a forty-million-dollar project, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to give us true sound relief? Would you like to ask that question? And then the last note I had is configuring the software. It's currently on factory preset of on, off, and night mode, or thirty percent, sixty percent. Any kind of system, I work with engineering software, any kind of system should be more configurable, if you can get a consultant or the software manufacturer to come in and give, or add in the school department finer-grained controls, so we won't hear that boom at four AM or five AM when he turns it on. It is like a huge boom, and combined with the vibrations, we're awake at four AM. So, I really appreciate your help, the committee, Bob Behrens, and all of you. We really appreciate you working to get this software, so we'd love to play through you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, do you have a question? I do, it's more of a conversation. I think we talked about it the last time you were before, before us, as far as what's the primary heat source, what's the secondary heat source? And, and I may be wrong, but am I under the assumption that the, that the hot water heating system is actually the primary source, and these units are the secondary source or supplemental source? Or is it reversed?
So, in the heating mode, the building is broken up into zones, but the rooftop units provide primarily fresh air, and that air is conditioned, either in the summer where it's, some of the humidity is taken out, or in the winter, it's heated. But the primary heat source for the classroom wings is, in fact, as you say, the perimeter fin tube radiation. That's fed from a boiler system, it's supplemented by the geothermal wells. Going back to what Margaret said, she was spot on when she said, you know, the units come with factory presets, on, off, and so forth. Our contractor, that's how we run it. We got the building, we said no. We bought a technically, we bought a system that allows the technology to run in any type of system, any type of setting that we need. They knew that, they just didn't have it programmed. So, that's why we didn't take control of the operation until they had all that in place and it was commissioned. These units now are not running on factory presets, they're running on the school department's controlled sequence time, and they're tweaking that, knowing full well that on very bitter cold mornings, when students are due to arrive in the school at eight-thirty and teachers prior to that, they need to ramp up sooner than on more temperate mornings where they could probably just turn that on within a half the time. But they're still learning that, and, you know, we press them on it, but it's going to be a learning curve that's going to require some data and require some time where they could make those adjustments in anticipation of changes in weather and changes in occupancy, right? We had a holiday when, when we heard, all the units came on in the holiday, Monday holiday, why are the units coming over? Well, it was on that five-day on, two-day off, and they forgot to turn the Monday off, which they can do, but they just forgot, it was forgotten. So, that's going to be a learning on the operation.
So, if the units are bringing makeup air in, which is a requirement...
You have to turn over air.
When it's occupied.
When it's occupied.
Even when it is occupied, if it's bringing air in, it has to heat the air in the winter months. So, couldn't that just be delayed till a later time in the day? If the supplement, if the, if the primary heat source is the geothermal heating system, efficiency-wise, it doesn't cost much to have that system come on earlier and heat the building perhaps a little earlier to the temperature that you need it. And then if you're turning air over, couldn't that be started later in the day? Not four in the morning for those units to kick on, but six in the morning, seven in the morning, a more reasonable...
Or you might, we're, and that's, that's what they're working towards. They're ramping up the perimeter fin tube first. Well, the other thing the contractor had is he had just the opposite, they turned it over to us. He had the, the air handlers, the RTUs providing the primary and the perimeter doing the backup. Our, the school department quickly found that out and made the change, pretty abruptly, when they got their hands on the controls and figured it out. So, the answer to your question is yes, much later than, they shouldn't be coming out at four in the morning, right, or five.
But it did through the heating season?
It did because the contractor had, yeah.
So, even that alone, you know, forget spending one-hundred-and-fifty...
answer to your question is yes, much later than, they shouldn't be coming on at 4:00 in the morning, right, or 5:00.
But it did through the heating season.
It did because the contractor had it, yeah.
So even that alone, you know, forget spending $150,000. I mean, wouldn't just the tempering of the programming affect positively the sound?
Yeah. Turn them off if you hear nothing. We're here to say that we're going to do something to improve the conditions when they're operating. But clearly, shutting them off, I believe, would make everyone in this room pretty happy, with the committee. But there will be times when they're cold, or maybe the perimeter fin tube just can't do it, and you have to fire it. We haven't found that out yet, because our winter hasn't been that severe last year, and they're still working through. So there is, as you heard, this sort of commissioning and learning of the building, which goes on as we speak. Right now, we're in the sort of cooling type of mode, or dehumidification mode.
Suggestion. If you implement the mitigation methods that you're suggesting, one, two, and five, is it, would that not prevent you, in the event that that, in effect, does not solve the solution, that would not prevent you from implementing another solution, like extending the screening higher or replacing the units? Am I correct? So what I'm trying to say is, would it truly be inefficient to implement the suggestions that you're proposing this summer? We take additional readings, we see the impact on the residents, and, you know, if the impact isn't mitigated, then it may have to become a wider town discussion than just the planning board.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, I hope.
Well, let me give you an example. Option five, before baffling on, would be a $50,000 throwaway if we were to replace the units. I think that what the committee is looking to do, knowing full well that we met the obligations of the town bylaws, and at the same time, here that they don't quite work for the neighborhood, we've made a commitment that we could try to make improvements. Short term, these off, I'm not sure the entire audience here would ever applaud any other change unless there was zero notice. And I'm not speaking for any of this stuff, because I can give you the mic for a bit. So it seems to us, to group, as you talked about it, to do something here that's right, both fiscally or taxpayers' dollars to make improvements, but not over the top. And that if there really is, after another year of operation and learning, still a significant impact on the neighborhood, maybe that's the time when we talk at a different level as a community, say, what should we be doing? But it's not going to be funded at that point through our budget. That's the challenge. So it's beyond.
Understood. And I think that's what I'm suggesting.
It's beyond their control. They didn't suggest something like that, that we cannot fund. There may be a portion that would be funded, you know, without us there, but we would need bigger participation.
Again, my suggestion is to implement the mitigation methods that you're suggesting. Okay, maybe we can do something operationally to make it work better as well. And then we have to assess and see where that takes us as far as impact, you know, on the neighborhood. I do give weight to the argument that, you know, 15 or 16 or 17 million dollars of homes, property values, are being affected, you know, by this noise level. At that point, if the mitigation methods you're suggesting really don't address the problem, then I do think it's a wider town discussion that has to be done.
But from a building committee and building occupancy point of view.
Can you raise the microphone, please? Thank you.
From a building committee and building occupancy point of view, we really need to get closure on the building occupancy permit. That's where you come in as a board. If there's a significant impact in the neighborhood, then you're right, as a community, we need to work together. But the procedural issues here, that's what we're in front of you to talk about, is the procedural issue to move ahead with closing out the building permit. And then if there's still our issues, it's a wider town discussion. So I think I kind of agree with you. I'm not speaking for the entire committee, but I know I'm speaking with the committee, is we are at a point where we need to close out the building permit. We need some level of agreement, both from your side and from ours, on how to move forward and do that in an effective manner.
And I might be wrong, Sammy, but I think you might have been referring to adding maybe option three, which would have been adding the six-foot plywood screen, two, one, two, and five. Say we said to you, okay, we want you to do options one, two, and five. We come back, and maybe that doesn't work to everyone's satisfaction. I think what we're asking is if, at least I'm asking that anyway, if you weren't, you need to ask that, Sammy, is if we were to say, hey, well, everybody's understanding, including Mr. Behrens over here, that if we were to add six feet of plywood wall, that would make it much, much more palatable, okay, with the sound. What, do you know, I guess, that taken into account, what could we expect to get out of that, number one? Number two, though, with the expenditure of options one, two, and five, we have to add expenditure number three, would that be money thrown away? In other words, should three be part of the plan immediately, rather than saying adding it later, Bill? Because structurally, it would have been smarter to do it all at the same time? Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay.
The answer to your question is, if we did one, two, and five now, would we have to undo something to do three later? And the answer is no. Would that cost be $250 later? That would be higher. We'd have to publicly bid it. It would be a whole new contract, because we would be closed out with our contractor after the summer. So there would be an incremental change in the cost that we estimated, that's in front of you now. Would we be able to fund it? That's something, I can't answer that.
That's a definite hard number, $250,000.
That on your side needs to probably look at, it's essentially doing what I said before, you're basically going to have the sales sitting on top of the building. Does visual outrank the solution in the neighborhood? Probably not, but it's something that would have to be reviewed with you.
Definitely, I would, I would want to see the detail.
If that cost was not to put a screen all the way around to make it look complete, it was just facing one direction with some returns. So if the idea is that well to make it look good and function well, we need to add something on the other side, and that cost keeps going.
How much say does the committee have over the operations? Once you get your occupancy and sign off, and the committee kind of is done, the operation of the building, you have no sale? In other words.
Yeah, let me answer that in a sense that I don't think the committee has zero say. We can maybe advise, for instance, if the geothermal wells are not being utilized, we could bring the consultants in to sort of explain how to better utilize them. It's all automated, I'm just using that as an example. So we have that advising and assisting with additional training, calling the contractor back to do the training. He owes us training as many times through the first year as the operation folks needed. And so we are assisting on that, on that level.
I think what I'm getting at is, with the exception of a potential freezing condition, where if you did not bring those air handlers online to preheat the air to help supplement the heating, you know, if you had to bring them on because it was a freezing condition, that's one thing. But other than that, if they didn't come on till a more reasonable time, and that was dictated in the operations of the building, and perhaps as a caveat that this board sets as a condition, is that something you could implement as the committee, or would we have to do that directly with the building department?
You know, maybe that's a legal discussion, but I don't know. We're here to design and have the building constructed for the use of the students and the school department. I don't know if we can, as that committee, implement operational constraints on the building. I just don't know that. We might have to go back and ask and find out. I can tell you this, that I believe neighbors have Fred Dominici's email address. He's in charge of the district properties as far as operation. And he doesn't want this to continue either. So he's working pretty hard and monitoring, he's spending a lot of time on here. He's got all the buildings, school buildings, but he's spending a lot of time on Wellington, trying to get this to work for the school and for the neighborhood.
It has a lot to do with design criteria. Whoever the mechanical engineer was, could tell you, could answer a lot of these questions. Can the primary heat source, what temperature does it heat down to? And it's all about degree rise and the outside temperature, and you should be able to answer all of them.
Unless it's bitter cold out, the primary heat source can provide heat in those robes. It's cold out by the design engineer and by Fred.
I would suggest that those air handlers do not come on and preheat any air unless you fall below that temperature in its requirement to prevent freezing.
And that's the way Fred has to set up, and I'm sorry about that.
To put closure, any other comments? Please.
Daryl King, precinct one, and I've been working on this for a long time. I've been on the roof, I've been in the basement, I've seen the building management system. I've actually worked with Fred at the council to look at different options, and he's done a tremendous job. He's already switched around the fin heaters and the rooftop units. He's done a tremendous amount already, and it has quieted the neighborhood. I just want to say, before we go any further, the Wellington Building Committee has done a tremendous amount of work on this, and they should be applauded. And the neighbors are very appreciative of it. Going forward, we're hopefully cautious that this will work. But the committee has done a tremendous amount of work, and we do thank them for it, especially Bill. So we've done a lot with the tuning already, and he actually has turned them off completely at night during certain times. But there are other things that still come on in the middle of the night beyond his control, or for the control for which he does not understand. So more investigation has to go into that, maybe more training, maybe more flexibility, because you can't turn these units off. You have to go and pull the breaker to actually turn them off. The control system doesn't allow it. So they need more flexibility. So going forward, no one's proposing to replace the rooftop units, tremendous expense. And tuning works up to a point. But that brings us to mitigation. And the mitigation being suggested, recommended here, is a very good step. I think all of us would like to see the barriers go up in height, even if it's four feet or five feet, maybe six feet. Maybe there's a point in between where it makes sense to do it without going tremendously over budget, but it will help. Now, Bob has said two or three feet won't make any difference, it'd make a little difference, and you'd have to go five or six feet. What about five feet? Because I think they bid on six feet. I mean, we should look at incremental numbers here and see if we can do something. Because if you're up on the roof and you look, you see stuff blowing right out over the top of those things. So everyone, Fred included, Fred wanted to be here tonight. He was available for comments, he couldn't make it tonight, but he has done a great job with us. So I think what we want to follow up on is additional testing after we do these things. And I think you can do them incrementally. You can do, you know, one, two, and five now, and come back and maybe add something later. The only thing you couldn't do is if you wanted to replace the units. And no one is suggesting we replace the units. We want to mitigate them. And I think a lot can be done at the furnace exhaust, at the condenser exhaust, maybe with some shrouding. Maybe you don't have to put the noise mitigation inside, you put it outside. You put some shrouding on the outside. That's very commonly done on large ductwork. So I think there are solutions, and I haven't seen the specifics on those types of mitigation. They presented it to you, I haven't seen the numbers. But I think I like the fact that they suggested that. And I would also recommend maybe raising the height of the barriers. And doing it now, well, we can do it with our current contractors, we don't have to go back and rebid anything. So, and in conclusion, putting hard numbers on these noise levels is a tricky business. I was at the Noise Bylaw Subcommittee 10, 11 years ago with Bob when they were making these, and it was all about construction noise. It was not about HVAC noise going on throughout the night. There was a mistake made in putting rooftop units in a densely populated neighborhood. The mistake was made, it's no one's fault, no one's blaming anyone. But what we're left with is mitigation. And I think that the planning board should push for all the mitigation that we can possibly do. Thank you very much.
Okay, unless there are any more new comments, I think this is a nice place to head off. Okay, very quickly, please. New comments.
My name is Lisa Fiori, I live on Van Ness Road. I'm just making a plea for some more creative data gathering, maybe some survey data, environmental data. I don't know what birds used to populate the area, if people know about that. But these numbers, to me, my brain doesn't, you know, grasp them as well, and I don't live in the immediate neighborhood. But, I mean, surveys are not that price prohibitive, and, I don't know, I think, feel like these stories are pretty compelling.
Thank you. Last comment.
I'm sorry, David Gao from 44 Glendale Road, someplace between LM and N. And I also wanted to thank you all for all the hard work that's been done on this. My concern is, when we talked about the range of improvement that we expect, I think the numbers that we've mentioned is between 3 and 5 dB. And Bob's excellent report, one of the things that it points out is a 3 dB difference is something which is going to be a just noticeable difference in a laboratory. So until we get the anaechoic chamber built over the entire neighborhood, we would be spending potentially $150,000 to no avail. That would be wasted money. So I just hope that people will kind of keep Bob's expectation in the paper that, you know, a 5 dB improvement is probably a minimal standard for something which is actually going to make a difference. So I think if we're going to spend money, and speaking as someone who hasn't slept well in a year now, I hope we will, that I think that we have to have and be clear about where the finish line is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Last comment, after Mr. Cohen.
Martin Cohen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and an electrical engineer. First, there's a correction. I believe the J and D, just noticeable difference, is 1 dB. But of course, three times that is still not a big improvement. Secondly, on the issue of vibration, noise, sound, is mechanical energy transmitted through the air. Vibration is mechanical energy transmitted through the ground. Working on the noise from the air conditioning units may not solve the problem if the noise is coming from the geothermal system, which is coupling whatever energy it does directly into the ground. So, and that isn't something that all the baffling in the world is not going to cure. Do we abandon that system because it makes vibration? I don't know where the solution is there, that it should be looked into.
My name is Ed Cassangian, Precinct Six, but I think I heard earlier that the primary and secondary heating systems were running opposite than what they should be. Having lived through similar problems on new buildings, I'm confident that operationally, if we look at the design criteria, most classrooms designed for handling 35 kids or 34 kids, I don't think we have a class in that school that's got 35 kids in it. We may be able to slow down some of the fans, we may be able to reduce the size of the burners. Under extremely cold conditions, you're not even required to bring in any fresh air. So those units shouldn't even be operating on those coldest days, let alone, you know, operating at full tilt trying to preheat the air. So I think we ought to give them a chance to continue tweaking the operation of this thing and, you know, check out the design criteria for the spaces, and maybe we're providing more air than we have to, and therefore we could reduce the airflow and that kind of thing, and the fan speeds, and might get some benefit out of that.
Any additional comments? Please email them in writing. At this point, I want to engage in a discussion among the board. How do people feel? Any suggestions?
I think it would be beneficial to ask, and I know you guys have done a lot of work there, Bill, but it'd be beneficial to maybe ask what it would cost to actually have a five-foot or six-foot wall. five-foot or six-foot wall or around the entire perimeter of the units to make it look design-specific just while we're out there. I think I'm hearing it in the audience that I think that that's what a lot of the residents are asking for, so I think it would be something that would be worthwhile.
Yeah, I'll add that I think the options that you're suggesting are a good first step, and I think it just seems against sitting on the side of it, not knowing how much of the operational changes were put into place and how it affected the sound during the end of the winter. You know, my hunch is if they could get that, just as I just said, if they could tweak that, I think you're going to pick up a lot of DBs there. That's just my hunch, but once you've done those options and tweaking the operations, if the last thing to do is that fourth option, which is an add-on option and won't, you know, won't negate any of the other things you've done, I think that makes, you know, that makes the most sense. And if at that point you're not, you're still not there, then obviously it really has to be looked at closely, but...
You did raise that unit, that rooftop unit, up 28 inches, but you didn't raise the screening?
We are raising it.
You are raising that screening. Okay. Okay, so some raising of screening, you talked about the screening.
The unit that we moved is on the school street side next to the gym.
Okay.
Okay, and that's the photograph that you see in your package. That screen, again, we're looking for ways to save taxpayer money. We knew we had to raise that visually. We also have to do our screen work that I mentioned that our options wanted to. We want to combine those together in one effort. That's why it hasn't been done yet. We plan on doing that this summer, and so it will be done.
Okay, and on the units that are affecting the Orchard Street side, you don't think raising those by two, three, four feet would have any impact to screening? And we spoke about going on six feet.
I'm going to say, I'm going to answer that, and Bob's going to correct me.
Okay.
We asked Bob that question a half a dozen ways because it keeps getting asked of us as a committee, and we're not dismissing it lightly. What Bob, what we heard is that if you want to make a substantial difference in the sound, you need to have substantial height change. So we know by adding 30 inches on the RTU three side, School Street side, what it's costing us. We know that number's about $75,000. We have to do that because it's a visual thing. Our architect's saying, well, if there's nobody complaining, just leave it like that. It doesn't look that bad. And we said, no, we said we're going to do it, we're going to do it. So if we take that and double it, not just raising it 30 inches, but it's twice as much area, you know, that's another $150,000 in that range, maybe more. If we double it, it's exponential on the structural impacts of wind and the strength that's needed up there. So just going back to the question asked before, study that. We know it's in the $250,000. It's not going to be $150,000. It'll probably be more. We have a commission group that will have to look at this. It'll have to be detailed out. It'll have to be priced, and it will add some significant time to our effort that we're trying to do. If it's a comeback, if it's, you know, as a committee or as a community, we want to do more, what's the option? Let's look at that option number three that we dismissed earlier and go through what it might cost, and there's a budget that's put together, then that's a good idea. But as a committee, we met the bylaw. We met all the obligations of us. We're looking for closure on this issue, and at the same time, some community agreement that we're heading in the right way. It's, we're not dismissing this completely. We just need to get Wellington School complete, and if there's still a problem, let's work together to try and fix it.
Okay. Thank you. I have a recommendation, and let me see what the board does. I think that we can all agree, residents included, that your efforts are going in the right direction and that you are taking this matter seriously. Okay? It is your recommendation to implement the three mitigation measures that you have indicated, and we think that is a step in the right direction from what I'm hearing, and we would encourage you to implement those, and we would approve amendments to the site plan to allow you to implement those mitigation measures. At the same time, I don't know if I feel comfortable to give this complete closure without knowing the impact of those measures. You might want to look into what it would take to further extend some of the screening around the Orchard Street units, and it would be your recommendation. If it's not cost-effective, then that is your recommendation. Okay? We can wait to see the impact of the measures that you're suggesting. We can measure them. I'm just not comfortable at this point telling you that once you do the three mitigation measures you're suggesting, you can have your final occupancy permit. I think this is a town-wide issue, and I think the Wellington Building Committee should be part of that solution. And as long as you're operating under a temporary occupancy permit, you're still operating. The school is still open. The school is still in operation, but at the same time, it allows us, the planning board, you, the building committee, the residents, and the greater community not to appear to be just dismissing this issue and moving on and putting it in the hands of the school committee. How do others feel? Any?
These options, should they be done prior to school going back?
Working on the roof is at least not in the school building, but it is still disruptive to the school operations. The principal has made a lot of concessions during the first year to allow us to have contractors come in. We have to make sure they're courting. We have to make sure that the school is under complete control. Working on the roof is separate, so that's going to help. But this work is fairly extensive, particularly option number three, to be able to do that later on. It probably is something that would be underdated in another summer break. It's just, what we're talking about is a lot of steel, a lot of welding, some craniums that can be done on Saturday, so we have to look through that, so it's, I couldn't answer that.
What I'm suggesting is that the three options you've suggested, might those be completed before school goes back in session?
We are ready to pull the trigger on those immediately.
Because if that's the case, then you could do that work. We could measure again before the kids had to go back to school and potentially grant full occupancy then if it seems mitigated or at least to the levels that, you know, that these are suggesting. Because we don't know necessarily that you're even going to hit these numbers. These are estimates based on what these options will produce. Could be better.
As a board, and I know you have the bylaws to, of course, to the board, we've met all the obligations, and we're reaching even further to do that with the neighbors. We're not in disagreement, and most of these aspects. It seems reasonable to request, you know, to request this closure on this issue, and then if it's still not working, work together to either at the board level or maybe as a representative from the board, working with Wellington, go back and dislodge and support. You have Slutman sitting there today. I mean, work towards the right thing for the neighborhood, but right now, we don't have a bylaw, and we're making it better. So it seems that some closure should be made here, and then, I don't think there's anyone here in the audience that's going to say we're dismissing this. They saw what we've been doing since January.
Thank you. Andy.
No, I don't think anybody thinks you're dismissing this, but I think what Mike suggested is very reasonable, Bill. I mean, if, after you implement one, two, and five, we re-measure and there's no problem, you get your full C of O. If there's a continuing problem, you know, we obviously, like you said, as a community have to work together. It might have to go to a capital budgeting process to make a bigger improvement, but if what Mike said is objectionable, what timeframe are you thinking about?
I think we're almost saying the same thing.
Okay.
What we're looking for right now is closure on the permit, on the building permit.
Right. But I mean, will that happen before these things? No, it would happen after.
No, but this is a condition of the permit, say, one, two, and five, if you do that. And we're actually prepared. We have an estimate from our consultant to perform a second acoustic reading through the neighborhood. We kind of anticipated that. But to what level is acceptance? I asked the board. We have a bylaw. To what level do you want to improve that to hold us to say you passed the test? That's where it gets tricky. You know, we've made a measurable improvement. We anticipate from here, and we can go and test it and show it, but when do you say you pass and when do you say you fail?
Okay. Thank you. Board, any other comments, suggestions? I like Mike's idea, and I'm echoing the same thought, that what we should do is we should authorize them, amend the site plan, to authorize them to do their three mitigation items. I'm personally not prepared to say that once you do those three mitigation items, regardless of the consequence, you get your final building permit, but that's my sense.
What's the motivation? And I know you've been at this for quite a while as a committee, and closure's important, you can all move on irregular lives and everything, but is that the motivation? Is it just to finalize the committee work, or is it something I'm missing?
We are trying to close out with our contractor as well. Our superintendent's licensed on the permit. Our permit does not close, keeps simple, but keeps our contract open with them. So there's one aspect. It's not an overarching aspect of this, but it's one issue. The students are safe every month. When complaints, on the sixth of the month, issues another temporary security violation. It's almost like clockwork. Fantastic. But that happens every month, so there's some, and you're right, it's safe to operate. It's, that's part of the law in the state of Massachusetts. You have this temporary security. So we could continue to operate under that. But if we're looking at retesting, which I don't, I like, I'm an engineer, so I like testing, but I also like testing against a standard, because I could just have a whole bunch of data, and it doesn't mean anything unless I know what I'm testing against. So if we're testing again, what is it that we're trying to achieve so we can say, fellows, we passed or we didn't pass? What we wanted to demonstrate tonight is these anticipated changes are substantial. They are noticeable in the range of five plus in the high air region, so we felt we met that.
Okay, and let me answer that. Even with a decimal change of three, four, or five, you are still 10, 11 decibels above the ambient level that these people were living with before that school went up, and that's the standard you have to offset against. I'm not saying you have to go back down to the ambient level, but to me, 11 decibels above that, and those numbers mask that because they don't show the ambient level, is difficult to live with if you're a resident next door to that school. So what I suggest is implement your mitigation measures. Let's see where it gets us. If it gets us to the range of five or six, you know?
Five or six levels.
If it gets us to the range of five or six decibels above the ambient level, then...
We won't get there. Our consultant said we'll never get there.
You'll never get there?
With the six-foot wall, you'll never get there?
Right now, we can watch today. The drop-in running, higher than the major, with relative running in there.
Okay, well, we are clearly not saying that you are to reduce the ambient, you know, the noise level of the community. What we're saying is the effect of those rooftop units on the noise level of the community. Okay, what I hear you say is if you further reduce those levels by three, four decibels, you are in the range, and that may be what extending the height of the screening will do. That's what I thought I heard you say. Am I putting words in your mouth?
I think that we, that we come to some agreement tonight, and we're pretty close, and we will probably leave with an understanding of one, two, or four, do some readings after that. I want to be clear, do some readings after that and see where it gets us. What I'd like to know is what are we shooting for? If you're saying five over the March readings, first of all, we have to wait till next March, so that's going to push us out. If we couldn't get those readings again until March, that's going to be extremely difficult, even with raising the screen wall. That's what we've been told by our consultant. If it's within 10, that's probably more reasonable, and we might be able to get there. But again, we can't get that reading until March of next year. We can't do it in August, while we're going to be finishing up.
Okay, and my response is, I know we're not there yet. Your mitigation measures might have more dramatic results. We don't know. They might have less dramatic results. We don't know, but what I'm hearing is it doesn't feel like we've addressed a proper solution yet, so we are willing to address it incrementally with the hope that we are able to get there. If it does become a community-wide discussion, then so be it, but the Wellington Building Committee should be part of that discussion. I would hate to see you disband and then turn to the community and say, so...
Let me close in saying that we're not going to disband and walk away from this. You know, I'm a Bellknot resident like you. I live not too far from here. I know many of these people here, and that's not what we're about today. I'd have to say that this building, it's not a private building, so we're all here. I think it'd be a lot different if we had lawyers.
And everybody appreciates what you've done. I didn't hear anyone criticize.
Including the board.
Yeah, including the board.
So we're going to work towards something that I think is reasonable. I hope that what we do this summer will be better than what you expect, and maybe we come back and wrap that up. Maybe we don't have to have a hearing. I don't know. Maybe just a report would be sufficient, so I'll leave that in the hands of the board.
Thank you. Okay, we have to move on. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to hear it.
Okay, motion to close this portion. Well, we want to continue.
Motion to continue the Wellington School public hearing.
Until a date in September?
September 11th. Would that be enough?
A date to be determined sometime after, after, a date to be determined sometime after the summer vacation.
Okay, no, no, no.
Okay. Pick a date, and we might do it. At 11, okay.
For the 11th.
25th, the 11th.
11. If we need more time, we'll let you know.
Continue to September 11. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, do I hear a motion that we do authorize an amendment to the site plan for them to implement the three mitigation measures that they have suggested? Okay, second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we will resume with Cushing Village. Okay, well, people, please take their seats. Okay, I would like to reopen the planning board hearing, and our next topic is the continued public hearing on Cushing Village application. Just by way of background, we had our last public hearing on April 17, 2012, and since that time, for almost two months, we have been working with the developer. What I did is I established a small working group comprised of myself, of Andy Rojas, and the developer's team, together with our peer review consultant, Steve Hyken of Icon Architecture, and we have been working and making comments to the plans, and tonight, the applicant will unveil the plans as they have developed to date. After they make their presentation, I'm going to ask our peer review consultant, Steve Hyken, to make a presentation outlining what the position of the working group, namely Andy and I, has evolved to during the course of, during the course of our working group sessions. sessions. We will take some comments from the public, but I will emphasize that your comments have to be limited to the plans that are being presented, okay? And not general comments that we have heard before, whether in favor of the project or opposed to the project. That is not the issue tonight. The issue tonight is simply reaction to the plans that are being presented. Other issues such as traffic and economic impact and effects on municipal infrastructure will be addressed at upcoming hearings. So with that, I ask attorney Mark Donahue to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Donahue behalf of the applicants and the advocacy partners. As the chair indicated, it has been about two months since we were here last, and the only constant since then is Red Sox is still in last place because Cushing Village has changed significantly since then. We're very excited to be able to reveal that to you this evening and discuss the changes. An important part of getting to this point was what you did on the April 17 meeting, which was to choose a peer consultant or peer review group to work on the project, led by Icon Architecture with the other specialties that will be involved later in the process. It's been an important step to be able to put clear articulation and meaning to the comments that we were hearing from the board and from the public through the public presentations we've been making since our filing in January that the project was too big. In that effort, Icon produced for you a memorandum dated May 4, which was their review of the initial plan as had been modified during the course of the public hearing process. It's important to focus on their initial comments because it became the working basis over the next two months as far as where the plans would change. Icon submitted that memorandum to you in a conclusionary fashion. What they found was that there was a general lack of open space, that the site itself at the ground level was too dense, that the site needed to improve pedestrian and vehicular circulation, needed to broaden and realign what was referred to as the Horn Road corridor, needed to move the Winslow Building further off the street, needed to restructure the building footprints to allow amassing of usable open space, and to reduce the number of steps and complexity of the upper floors of the Highland and Pomona Building. These are important because moving forward from the developer's viewpoint, it's important to try to achieve the town's goals and still have a development, that any reductions in size, scale, and mass be tied to specific and articulated design concerns as opposed to simply the concept of reduction for reduction's sake. So what we want to review with you today, this evening, is the plan, particularly the site plan, as it has been developed through that working session, and show to you how the development team has responded to the comments from Icon, which in turn were the comments that we heard through the public hearing process. We see this evening basically as a continuation of those working sessions. We think it's a good idea to do it in public so people know where we are and what remains as where we have to go. We don't think we have that far to go to reach a consensus with the town as far as what it will look like, because we're very close. But we think we need to do that, talk about what further refinements are necessary, what reasons for those refinements, so we can understand what's trying to be achieved by any of those and move forward. Consistent with what the chair said, I don't see this evening in any fashion being a debate essentially about the pros and cons of the development, but I see it as working toward the development once again of the size, scale, and mass. My suggestion would be that the comments be limited, in fact, and that public comment be held in totality this evening, particularly given the hours. What we need is direction more from the board and its consultant as far as where we are now, what specifically else has to be done, and hopefully some dialogue asked of that. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is ask Peter Quinn, our architect who you know, to review the plan and to break down the site plan into components that will show, to some extent, reminding people where we were when the plan was originally submitted, what we were trying to achieve, and what changes have been made through that.
Sure. That would be helpful.
Good evening. Peter Quinn, Peter Quinn Architects, architect of record for this project. And we're very happy, very pleased to present very significant changes to the site plan. I think members of the board and public will be pleased with many of these items, and we do appreciate the input of Icon Architects in getting us to this point. Thank you. First, I'm going to, we'll come back to this in a nice perspective a little later on. But first, I'm going to just show an overall site plan and then we'll take it in some of its pieces. Can you hear me?
You can remove it.
Okay, I think that's probably better for me. So you're looking at an overall site plan to show you, give you orientation. Common Street is down here, Tripelo Road there, Williston, and then Belmont Street on this far left side. What you see here is a reshaped and reduced size of building footprint in some areas where we've taken out the ramp that was once behind the Winslow. We've significantly increased the amount of landscape area throughout the site. We, I'm just giving you the big picture right now. We retained the alignment of Horn Road in order to maintain that view corridor that people have, and also that helped to widen this space here compared to what we had before. And we also introduced a different traffic pattern. Once this ramp was out of here, we kept this as a one-way drive in, and I'll show you how the ramp and municipal parking works in a few minutes. So this is the overall site plan. First area is back behind the Winslow. We're very pleased to show this. This is a large public plaza that we were able to create back there. This is what was there before was the ramp with a walkway. So we'd also had quite an extensive amount of commercial space back there which we reduced or create this public space. So it varies in width from 32 to 43, 38 feet. It's variegated in landscape. It has areas for outdoor seating, for sitting, for playing, for games, and it's just generally a public space. And of course, we're hoping that there'll be cafes and restaurants that will be able to use this space to enhance the public benefit. So first, we relocated the ramp as I mentioned. There was also a trash enclosure that we had back here at this end. We have eliminated that and we'll take care of that within the building. We also have some covered area for tables as well that is along this walkway, which I'll show you more of in a minute. And we did have, at one point, have 10 parking spaces along Williston. We reduced that to five. I know there's been some discussion about possibly changing those to parallel, but we haven't brought our traffic and site engineers back in, and at that time, I hope we can have a discussion about that, whether that stays or was changed. Moving on, this is a view of what we would propose for this, for this public space. What you're looking at here is the covered walkway on the right that connects to Tripelo Road. There's a parking area. This is protected, the parking area is protected by railing. There's enough depth in this, about eight feet, so that you could have small cafe tables people can walk by. We're hoping Starbucks will be in this location. And then you enter into a large public area with space for seating. We hope to create a trellis area with vines growing eventually so that everybody has the benefit of this, whether they're using shops or not and gathering. And this space is also linked with a large open space, which is also a parking lot, of course. We've reduced the size of this from what it was before. Before, we had about 20 some odd spaces in there. We shortened it in a bit, and we've also widened it by moving, moving the Winslow and getting rid of these large overhangs that we had that were in the parking lot before. So this is now completely open at 60 feet of width with some sheltered areas along the pedestrian walkways off Tripelo. The idea here is that with a special paving pattern and direct connection to this public plaza, we can create and offer to the town a special events plaza in this area where on days when there's no parking, for instance, on a Sunday morning, it could be a farmer's market or an after-party concert that people can gather, there's several, several hundred, maybe even a thousand people could gather in this whole extended area. We've also created clear pedestrian paths. It'll show you a little more about that in a minute. Off Tripelo, leading to the back of the site, and along the back of the Winslow and connecting into that main walkway. The amount of parking we have here now is 19 spaces, so with the five that we're proposing at the far end up here, we have 24 on grade. There's also a request to maintain this alignment of the sidewalk here, so we've done that as well. This is the front of the Winslow, this is the Winslow here. Originally, we had followed pretty much the property line and set up our building along that line, and because of the road is curved, there was a point at which we actually touched the property line and made a very narrow sidewalk. And what we were able to do is actually open up this space a little bit so that it maintains a 12, actually a 13-plus width sidewalk, including four or five feet on the development property, which would be a public benefit to have that extra width. This way, when landscaping is placed, with the Tripelo Road rebuilt, you'll be able to get by those trees and any landscape amenities that are out there, such as benches, and still have adequate walkway and actually a fairly pleasant space to navigate around the site. This also allows for more benches, of course, and we'll study that a little further as to, you know, how they're laid out.
Peter?
Yes.
Speak up. None of us can hear you.
Okay. All right. At the corner of Tripelo and Common, we've also increased that area as well. We've increased the amount of public amenity there. We've added more depth to the front so that, including a covered area, there's about 23, 24 feet of depth in that area. So that, depending on what retail space is in there, they may be able to make use of that for outdoor seating as well as a gathering space that can be used. And this is of particular interest because the access to the municipal garage is right here so that people can come directly up out of the garage, which I'll show you in a little bit, and move into the rest of the square. Fossil got, again, adequate, more than adequate, even generous width to the sidewalk here. This is mostly in the area of 15, 14, 16 feet. I think that one's 16 there, yeah. Now, on Horn Road, as I mentioned, we changed the alignment to work with the original alignment. And the benefit there is that this actually opens up this space quite a bit. We also set the buildings back from the old edge of the right-of-way between five and eight feet and created an entry for what will be the future retail space. There's access from the garage directly into that space, and the buildings do step back as they go up, and we'll talk about that later, I'm sure. But before, we had just a fairly simple, you know, sidewalk with a little bit of plant or landscape here. We've actually been able to create some spaces, a place for bikes to be stored, and a nice transition off Common Street into the retail entry. We've also taken the loading dock and enclosed it completely in a garage-like part of the building, including the dumpsters, so all of that is hidden. And finally, in our rejuggling of some of the space, we actually were able to create a retail space at this corner of the, that'd be right in this area, of the Highland, the building number three. And this is of great benefit because it allows us to get activity right on that corner rather than having the garage there as we had there before. Now, the high end of the site, where Belmont Street meets Common Street, Common Street's here and Belmont's there, I know that there is a plan that has been proposed by the engineering company who's redoing Tripelo Road, and we're hoping to request some changes to that, a benefit to everybody, which would be to widen the sidewalk in this area and create enough space here for a drop-off right at the front of the Highland Building. There's plenty of room, as you all know, this is an extremely wide intersection, so it would make good sense, and this was actually recommended by the peer review, Steve Hyken, as well, to open that up and create some more space in there for the public. Finally, behind the building, we have a landscape area. Before, we had this walkway. It was actually pinched by the size of the garage, and we had not created a landscape courtyard as we have now. So again, with the help of Eric Rourdin, we redesigned this building. We pushed it back. We have very large landscape buffers in here now. This would be all landscape, and of course, we'll get much more specific about what that landscape is eventually. But the idea is that it comes right into the courtyard of this building, which has a kind of U-shape to it. Finally, I'm just going to mention very briefly for a minute how the parking is handled, now that we did move the ramp. If you remember, the ramp used to be over here. So what we did is we actually created a single entry to municipal garage as well as the commercial garage as well as the residential garage. So when you come in Horn Road, you turn and you're actually heading down, not a very steep slope, but about 2% to 5%, depending on where you are. And that then gets underneath this retail space, and then that garage continues. This is all municipal and commercial spaces here. There's about 100 spaces total. So we need 50 for the municipal. There's another 50 available. At the end of this, there's a proposed stairway and an elevator that take you right out to the street at the corner that I mentioned earlier. There'd also be smaller access elevators right into the retail store office. And finally, at the upper end, you can just make your way right down a safe passageway right out onto Horn Road and across. Beyond that, it'd be residential lots, which we haven't really delineated much at this point. I'm going to leave that there and pass that back to Mark just for some comments.
What might make sense, Mr. Chairman? Because we say most of the time with regard to that, with regard to the site plan and working through the working sessions, we do have some changes in the building. Those are a little bit more in flux, so this might be an appropriate time to hear the comments from your consultant and then we can go on to the other comments.
Okay. Will you be discussing height and stories at all tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Steve Hyken. I'm the principal of Icon Architecture in Boston. We are the planning board's peer review consultants. If we're going to do it this way, sort of in segments, then I think the site plan drawing that you presented would be useful. I can talk to that rather than the drawings that I run along have more to do with the stacking and amassing. I would say that as far as the site plan is concerned, that's where we have made the most progress.
Would you like the pointer from Peter? Might that help?
Yeah. I think we've made substantial progress in terms of the site plan. As Mr. Donahue mentioned, our comments in our initial review did have a lot to do with the lack of pedestrian space, the tight sidewalks, multiple circulation patterns for the garage. I would say the deletion of the ramp that was here was an idea that came from the development team, but it was a result of our suggestion that there was, the garage that was here that was intended to serve the residences was a dead-end garage, and it would have had people driving in and coming back. And we realized that through the grading, this garage could be connected to the main garage underground, freeing up that space, which I think was a major enhancement to the project because, as Peter said a little while ago, this corner was nothing more than an open-screen garage area on one of the major streets. So from a site plan perspective, I think that was a major benefit. There were also a series of 10 or 15 parking spaces right against the property line here with no landscape buffer, and those have been eliminated in favor of landscaping. So there were other changes to the site plan that I think have been of benefit. I think we are still, as Peter mentioned, we haven't had our traffic consultants look at these parking spaces. I think these are still problematic because they're interrupting a sidewalk on Williston Road, and there are only a half a dozen of them, so from our perspective, it's not clear how important they are. The idea that this space could be used for other purposes, like public get-togethers, does work because the access to the garage is entirely from this area, so this space is not necessary to get to the major parking resource for the project. So from a site plan perspective, I think there's been a lot of progress. We went a little bit further than what you see here in looking at footprints, and, you know, we'll probably hear a little bit more about it later. I think the realigning of Horn Road back to its original current alignment as opposed to having it bent and... to having it bent and with a very tight pair of buildings facing each other across, is an improvement. But we were actually seeking a further reduction in the overall size of this building, pulling it back. There's a kind of an imaginary line at the fronts of the residences here that we would like to see respected a little bit more. And then, there are other concerns about, we understand the developer would like to have a substantial retail footprint. And what we're concerned about more from the overall feel of the project when it's done is the footprint of the Pomona Building, where we've suggested it's been simplified. Peter didn't show that. There used to be three wings. You may see it later in Peter's presentation. Both of these buildings are now U-shaped, as you'll see later. This building formerly had an E shape, and it had some very tight interior courtyards, which we feel may not have been such an impact on the public realm, but we felt, we were also looking from the design of the project to make sure that the units that are being produced with the good units and attractive units to the people who will ultimately live there. And we think, as you may see later on, depending on what Peter's going to show you, that there's been some improvement in the quality of the units that will be developed here, but we think there's still some more work to be done. So I'll hand it back to Mr. Donahue to go into the next phase of your presentation.
That's kind of the site plan in there, as Mr. Heiken indicated. There's a couple of areas that we need to talk about. We need to know a little bit better as to what the design goals that they're trying to achieve to come up with a meaningful response. Going up from the site plan to the buildings, there have been changes as far as the footprint of each of those floors. And Peter has a slide with regard to those that I'm going to ask him to describe. We can keep going. As far as the changes we've made, and that'll bring us to a point as far as what we've been able to achieve really through that working session. What I'd like to then do is start to talk about some of the issues that we have remaining and get some guidance on those. So maybe you want to talk about what we have changed, Peter?
There've been a lot of different versions of the plan, so I want to try to simplify it and just give you an idea of what changes have been made and have been suggested by the town or by the peer review process to the building. So, what you're seeing actually is an older version of the plan that we had in April. It's not the original special permit plan, but just to give you an idea of some of the cuts, you know, this was extended out into the parking lot that's been cut off. There actually was some over here as well. There's some cutaway on this side, and we did some of that. This is the E, the middle part of the E that Steve was just referring to, and we've eliminated that wing. We still have a very small bump out, but it's not significant. And then, finally, with the realignment of Horn Road, we did cut this back significantly, and you know, we staggered it with the alignment of Horn Road. On the Highland, we did reduce the massing at the upper levels, at the top level here. There was a desire to cut this as well, and we were going to talk about that a little bit tonight. We did cut back here as well to add more buffer to the neighborhood here. At the top level, at the last point that we left with the peer review process, we had a general understanding that this building, which has both third, three-floor presence on Belmont Street and a little bit of fourth floor on Common Street, was something that we thought would still be acceptable to the town, but I believe we're going to end up talking about that tonight as well. Finally, these are some of the changes that were made from the original application. They're just overlaid. I know it's fairly confusing. I apologize about that. But I think at this point, we're, you know, into a working session here. This is the original Winslow, and you can see we actually rotate it. That's how we were able to increase the width of the sidewalk there. We still have pretty much the same footprint that we had originally on that. That was an attempt to try to keep the design that we had intact. On the Pomona, you can see it's been cut quite a bit. These are the residential levels with the lowest down below and the highest up above. Of course, that E has been taken out, the overhangs, the overhangs, so forth. So that's been trimmed up quite a bit. On the Highland, there's an area of the Highland, which of course is below grade, but the first residential level was sort of regularized from the original and set back a little bit on these upper levels here. And of course, we have eliminated an entire floor from the original application, and we reduced the width of this thing, the size of this thing, quite a bit as well.
So, that's where we are with regard to the plans that we had provided to the board. Since they've been provided in the last week, we've got some feedback. And if I understand correctly from your introduction, Mr. Chairman, you're going to have Mr. Heiken summarize those? Is that where we are?
Sure. I just cannot hold on to set of drawings, but I think these drawings really show it.
Could you use the mic?
You're ready enough. I think I have versions of these, but I think these drawings are clear enough in terms of where we currently are and why we're here. From my sort of approach as an architect and urban designer in trying to sort of deal with what is an appropriate scale of project in a neighborhood setting, combined with the very specific bylaw, section of the zoning bylaw that was created for the Cushing Square area, from one point of view, we were pushing the envelope and shrinking buildings to try to create adequate space between them, to not have them hang over parking areas, to not block the line of sight along Horn Road, to provide adequate setback on a sidewalk. Even though the zoning says there should be no setback from the front property line, when you get buildings of this size, the planning board has discretion to allow a setback, and we were proposing that the buildings be set back a little bit more than they were, and I think that's worked out. The other key part of the Cushing Square zoning asks for step backs as buildings go up into the third and fourth floor, and it gives the planning board fairly wide discretion as to what's appropriate. And that's really been, that's where we've gotten to in terms of the discussion now in terms of what's appropriate. And the, sort of the working group of the planning board, looking back on that and the understanding and commitments that have been sort of discussed at a neighborhood level, feels that in addition to the cutback of mass that the development team has proposed, some additional step backs on upper floors are still very much needed to make this project in the end acceptable from the town and neighborhood level. And those are the ones that are shown on this slide. The top level of the Highland Building, it's a complicated building in terms of how many floors one is looking at because of the substantial change in slope on Common Street around to Belmont. And what you're looking at here are residential levels. There's another, remember, level below this that's retail, commercial at the Pomona and the Winslow. At the Highland, there is a commercial space. There's a commercial space here, and the rest of it is garage. So there's actually another level that is visible at the street here, but gets buried underground over here. We feel like that top floor here, which impacts the adjacent house on Belmont Street, is very much still an issue. The upper level here, as it overhangs Horn Road, remains an issue. And on the other side of Horn Road, this line represents the line that aligns not with the right-of-way, but with the fronts of the houses, the two houses that are on Horn Road just west of the site, where we'd still like to see some further reduction in mass and opening up space. And I don't know whether, again, what's coming, Peter mentioned step backs on the upper floors of the Pomona. Are you going to show something like that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And then finally, the, again, remembering that there's another floor of the Winslow below what's shown here. The general feeling is the Winslow needs to remain a three-story building. The design of the Winslow, I felt, was fairly attractive. It was a building with a pitched roof. We like that pitched roof. But three levels of usable space is what the working group feels is the right scale for that building. So, that's really the sticking point, where, from the perspective of the town and the working group versus what the developer feels is a feasible project, that's where we need to continue our discussions and why this is still kind of a working process.
Steve, is it possible to put up the working group plans that you prepared?
Yeah.
I think it would help for illustration purposes.
Right. Here.
Okay.
This is the garage. So, go up. Yes. Number two. Again, well, one of the, as long as we're looking at this slide, here's, I think that was, I have a more powerful pointer. This is the line that I was referring to of the, more or less, these buildings aren't quite aligned, but that's more or less the setback line of the houses on Horn Road. And we had pulled the building back beyond that. In fact, the working group was willing to sort of allow this building to come toward that line more than this version of it. We had also thought about creating an additional public plaza here, but I think it's been recognized that of the various public spaces in the project, this one here, more space on Horn Road, the ability to use this as a public plaza are more important than something that would be wrapped by this building. So, we're willing to look at a resident, a retail footprint of the building that fills that space in, as well as some additional bump outs at lower levels along Horn Road going up. I don't think there is that much debate about the footprints of this first residential level, which we're calling the second floor. The Cushing Village team calls it the first residential floor. Here's the simplified configuration of the Pomona with, you know, just a simple U shape and a similar U shape in the Highland Building.
Excuse me.
So, the issue becomes more...
So, that U area of the Pomona, which you called the public gathering space on the first floor, if that's expanded to retail, is the idea that would be a green roof then on the?
Well, that would be nice. You know, how that roof, one reason that we had sort of reduced it is my feeling that it's kind of difficult to maintain a roof, understanding the desire to maintain retail space, but these units would be looking at a roof at that level. That's a difficult problem. They could have decks possibly using part of that roof, but there are units in a corner that are looking at each other if there were decks there. So that's a little bit of a problem for the design team to solve. It's less of a public space problem than a architectural and development problem. But I think we agree that this space is a public space. It has less importance than this space, that space, this space, and the public sidewalks. So, we can go to the next level. This is where the working group's reductions in footprint become apparent, shown differently here. So here, at the second floor, or the third floor, which is the second residential floor, we are proposing a step back of the Pomona Building along here, so that there are some units here that have disappeared. And not much change here. This is the same as the floor below. And then, going up one more, then you see this is, the space has disappeared. A reduction of a couple of units here on the next level, which is the fourth floor. The Winslow is done. That becomes a three-story building, fourth floor of the Pomona and the fourth floor of the Highland. And then, I think that's it. I think we are, there's no more. There is an additional floor in the current development team's proposal over here. And I haven't seen the rest of their presentation, so I don't know what they're proposing for the Winslow at the moment. So, we continue work.
So when I said when we started that I thought we were close, it's because I do think we are incredibly close to a consensus. What we have essentially is four areas that we've been asked to make further adjustments to, consistent with the entire process we've gone through. What the development team has tried to do is respond, and we understand exactly what the design criteria and the design goal is in a fashion that'll work to achieve that goal and still works for the development. When we get to these issues, we have some struggles in understanding what the goals are and making sure that people have, understand what we have really proposed and what it appears to be as we move forward. So, it might make sense for us to walk through each of the areas, try to give you some additional information, and try to give you a sense of what type of compromise we might be able to make in those areas in an effort to try to get to years. You can give us some feedback as to whether we're on the right track. Next slide. So, with regard to the highest level of the Highland, what the concern we heard essentially was not so much the entire floor, because as Peter will describe in more detail using the slides on the right-hand side, there's no argument that the building appears as one is on Belmont Street, that the building appears to be a three-story building. There are three rows of windows and a roof above it. It's a three-story building. As it extends down Common and therefore becomes more prevalent to those on Horn, the concern was as the extension went out, that it became more obvious that there was an additional floor up there and some nomenclature as to what that floor was in some fashion, so that it appeared to be higher than it should. You can see the line we put in between what appears to be third floor and fourth floor. What I'm going to ask Peter to do is describe specifically how the building essentially goes from three to four to three in appearance, so that you understand first what we're talking about with regard to, for lack of a better term, the top floor of the Highland, and what we might be able to do to try to reach some of those concerns. Do you want to walk through that right side?
This is a very simple diagram of the elevation along Belmont Street. There's a half-story, actually less than a half-story that is below grade. This is actually the fitness club that's down in there. Then you start with three residential levels, one, two, three. You're only seeing three stories of residential units on Belmont Street. This tower here will, sort of as a marker as we turn the corner, and of course, everybody knows the grade falls down very sharply down Belmont Street. And what is there, what we've proposed originally, or the most current plan, was starting from the tower to the right of the tower, that grade falls off enough that this begins to count as a four-story building. And here it is, and here it is. And then, there's a series of step-back spaces. This is back 11. This is back, I think, 20-something. But nonetheless, visible from, such as it is off Common Street, you would have, in some part of this, you would have four stories. And then, as it continues further down Common Street, the grade, of course, continues to fall away, and the garage and what, you know, what this new retail space is down here stacks up to be four stories again along Horn Road. We understand that this is an objection. So, what we're proposing to do, and I'll come back to this area along Horn Road in a minute, but in this area here, we'd cut these back dramatically, so that really you'd have a four-story effect really only right in this area here, which is about 75 feet of an otherwise facade that's over 150 feet. So it's right in this area here that you would see it, and this is the part that we would cut out. We would need to readjust our internal circulation and come up with a different way of bringing down people to a stairway, that is, was the main reason for extending this thing out. So that's a proposal we'd like to put in front of you to suggest a way out of what is for us a pretty tough situation of losing that entire floor.
Peter?
Yeah?
If you took the working group's meeting and the... Peter, if you took the working group's meeting and the, and my recommendation, what would be eliminated?
This entire thing.
Okay. And how would that translate?
So, this, what you see here is, you know, the mansard would presumably drop down. You'd have a two-story building on Belmont, not a three. So, this would just come boom, down.
Okay. And what about, what about those, if you go to the next slide, yes, above, yes, what about those areas?
They... Well, we're proposing, just compare these two. We're proposing to reduce this to a small area right here, which is set back 11 feet.
Isn't that the area that the working group has asked to be eliminated?
Exactly. So, we have eliminated it.
You've cut it back.
We've cut it back quite a bit, yeah, yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't, no.
There's actually two changes the working group has suggested to the Highland.
Right.
And we're going to review the other one, which is below the top level. So, this is at the top level. If you want, maybe it would make sense to go to the other one and then come back so you can see the overall change to those drawings on the right-hand side.
Okay.
So, you can understand the building.
Right.
Sammy, I'm going to need a moment with Mark on the hall.
Okay. In the meantime, okay, if I can ask Steve, our recommendation would have what effect on, on that drawing?
The working group's recommendation would eliminate everything up here. Oops, sorry, pressing. The, the working group's recommendation would eliminate the two, four, oops, six. Two, four, six, eight units.
Okay. And what visual effect would that have?
Well...
To the elevations that are on the...
These are very sketchy elevations. I can sort of understand them, but I could imagine a lot of people are having a hard time figuring out what's...
Including myself.
What's really going on there. And there were some previous sketches. I don't, again, I haven't peeked ahead to see what I probably should have, to see what Mark and Peter and Eric are going to show us going forward. But I think it would be well worthwhile, as this process continues to the next iteration, to have not only elevations of these buildings that show them with more, you know, the details, the windows, the roof. One thing that I understand is that this, that's the wrong thing there, sorry. This is a, it's a story, but it's also, it's a mansard roof. It's what a lot of architect... And the initial design of this building is very different. The design was revised when Eric Rodeen and the Line Company came in to a building which I think people liked better than the original proposal with a mansard roof. And the whole idea of a mansard roof is to sort of bring the apparent height of a building down a story by putting a story of usable space in what looks like a roof. And I think it would be useful, I think the development team, if they want to make their case, to show that not only in elevation but in a 3D model. So that, I mean, there's a lot of discussion about what you see. This, this space, Peter has pointed out, is set well back behind the facade. But in elevation like this, you don't see that. The value of a 3D model, which I know you've started, you probably haven't updated, would be to show what that looks like. Once you get that model, everybody can see pretty clearly what a building project looks like from, from here, from here.
Okay. But our suggested revision would eliminate what?
Would, would take this off. So, this would, as Peter said, look like a two-story building. You know, whether that's a one-story building with a mansard roof or a two-story building with a parapet or go back to a gable roof, I don't know what the design response would be. But, you know, that from Belmont Street, this would be gone. You would see, in effect, a two-story building with a little bit of a lower level visible above grade. And then similarly, this would disappear here. This would be three stories here and presumably in some fashion step down. And we understand there's some other discussion about what the development team has done on this piece of the building. But I think those elevations, which also should show the scale and separation of the buildings next door, that first, it's really important to see where that first house on Belmont Street is on this side, how far away it is and what its relative scale is. Similarly, when we're looking at the Winslow and the Pomona, you know, what the nearby houses, where they are in scale on elevations and in a 3D model.
Thank you.
Sammy, to address your question further, my understanding was that this, this setback portion wasn't really something that, that was as contentious as what would happen at the Horn Road corner. And that's what I'm going to show you next, how we deal with that. So, one of, one of the things that's come up has, is, you know, how this Horn Road side meets Common Street. And we originally had planned a full story out here, which, when you look at it from Horn Road, does appear to be four stories as well as the first 25 or so feet of, of Common Street off, off that corner. You get, you get an effect of four stories. So, what we're proposing, rather than cut this entire thing out, is to still leave a unit but set it back dramatically so that it's 11 feet on, on the sides and 20 feet on the front, the front being Horn Road in this case. So, what that would do would be to, you know, this is, this is that, this little line right here that I'm tracing is the, the mass of that, of that unit there. And then you would step out and effectively have three stories on Horn Road and on Common Street corner.
Okay. But your question, above that mass, above what you outlined in red?
Yeah. Up in here?
Okay. Is that, is that what that is on the left-hand side?
That is, I'm going to go back one.
No, I'm talking about, if you go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay. You see, you see the mass right above it? Go up, yes, what's that?
That's rooftop from the floor below.
That's rooftop from the floor below. Okay.
I apologize that, you know, these aren't highly developed because we were just, you know, learning of these issues very recently and we wanted to get...
We got the feedback within the last week.
Yeah.
And I think the most important thing for us is to understand what the board's desire is and to find our, our position on it. Going to move on to the issue of the Horn Road, looking west at the Pomona. This is approximately what we have now on our plan that I showed you earlier of the site plan in this, in this area here. So, as I said, we, we opened this up by retaining the alignment. We've also pushed the buildings back some, been able to create some outdoor spaces. Just a very quick sketch, but shows you how these are stacked back and creating a, a space for the residential area beyond it to, to, to move down the sidewalk. If, just to give you a sense of reference, this is a picture, picture taken recently. Looking down there, of course, there's very, very large trees. But these, from the step, from the street line, which right away, these houses are set back about 15 feet. So, going back to our little image here, we're in the range of about six to 10 feet back. We're not quite, maybe in here about 15. But for the most part, we average about, about eight to nine feet rather than the, the 15 feet back.
Okay. And the committee's recommendation, the, the working group, was to go back 15 feet?
Correct.
Equivalent with the line of the residential?
Minimum, minimum 15 feet and then continue to step it back on the, on the third and fourth floors. We had some discussion with the working group about perhaps maintaining a little bit of depth here and then stepping it back more on the second, third, and fourth floors. We're certainly...
Peter?
Yeah.
As I recall, the last conversation that the working group had with you guys about this, in comparison to the plan that Steve Hyken showed, and he alluded to it, was, I think what we had said was that since you, your team wanted more retail space, which is also favorable to everybody, that we could move out the first floor retail to the line that Steve had shown that more or less matches the setback on the two houses most closest to this on Horn Road. But that would be the first floor, the retail. And that, that everything else behind that would step back much to the lines that Steve shows on his plans. While this drawing, particularly the one on the right, the little 3D sketch, shows a virtual three-story wall with no setback, much closer to the setback line than we requested. So, I'd say that there's definitely still issues right there.
Right, right. Actually, some of the, some of the alignment that Steve showed was the first time that we had seen it from him, okay? Because we, the plan that we showed, you know, I don't want to get all tangled up in this, but, but the, the last working session did not have as dramatic a cutback on the upper levels as what he just showed now. I mean, he, he's basically showing, you know, this thing cut back to here. I want to just move on to the last item.
Well, can we just stay with that for a moment?
Okay.
Because part of trying to be responsive to the idea of going to the setback and then stepping back in the future is understanding what we're trying to achieve by that. Part of it might be to create additional open space in front of the building along Horn Road. But we're not sure that that has a lot of value beyond what's already shown there as the plaza. Part of it might be to avoid, for lack of a better term, a canyon effect as one leaves Horn Road with buildings going straight up in a vertical fashion. That, that's resolvable in stepping back. But that might suggest that, for example, the retail could stay out as far as what we have here and step back from that point. So, what, what we need to, before we can come back with something concrete and show what we're actually proposing, is a better understanding of, among those goals, what we're trying to achieve.
I, you know, and, and I'll start just, you know, with that is, this open space on this side of the street is deemed one of the most valuable open spaces because it's south-facing. The two open spaces, when we had our discussion there, Mark, the last working group meeting, the two most valuable open spaces were behind the Winslow and this side of Horn Road in particular, because they're south-facing and therefore offer the highest level of amenity to pedestrians and patrons. The next level was the sidewalk open space because we wanted an ample streetscape, particularly on Trapalo Road. I think you can, you, we need you to step back more on the Pomona on Horn Road, unlike what's shown there. But we also need that retail face to be cut back. And we've said this several times, to be cut back to the setback line of the residential building program that happens for the rest of the Horn Road. So, I mean, I think we've said that a bunch of times.
And, and my recollection is, we agreed with you to allow you to expand the retail on the first floor because we thought retail, you know, the, the ratio of retail to residential would increase and that would be a good thing. So, we did allow you to fill in that what was shown as a pedestrian gathering area in, in the parking lot between the Winslow and the Pomona. And we did allow you to go further than, than Icon had originally recommended on the footprint of, of the Pomona, not quite that far, though. But since that added to the density of, of, of the project, our thought was we would reduce some of that density by reducing that upper level of the, of, of the Highland Building. So, that's how the two were, were kind of tied together, to my recollection. Is, is that accurate, Andy?
I think part of the logic was that, Sam.
Yeah. But anyway, continue.
So, I, I understand the idea of the, the retail and the, and the open space and stepping back. I, I guess we can take a look at that and would wonder whether you'd be open to having, at least if we moved the retail back, having the second level, the first level of the residential, the second level of the building at that and then step back to three and four. That's at least what one, one iteration that we saw during the week reflected that, that it would maintain this, wherever it was, it would maintain the same wall face essentially.
I, I think our recommendation was that with a reduced footprint, again, you know, having more of a southerly exposure there. And then you would be able to have on top of that...
At the same, at the same facade?
Same facade.
And then push back to three and push back?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's appreciated.
Am I correct, Steve, or that would be?
Yes, please, did, did the working group look at that fractional story that faces Belmont Street? In the, in the early, in the early design for that, it was shown as a, as a light window going down into the lower floor. But I've always felt like that looked like half a mistake to try to establish a floor level that was three or four feet above the sidewalk level. Are we down to where that floor started at the sidewalk level on Belmont Street?
It's, it's still about four feet above sidewalk there. So, it's, it's a...
That's a radius, right? It looks like the, for the deck area for...
Yeah, right. So, it'd be, it'd be landscaped. I can go back to that.
My question into the microphone, I think the last version of it, that's, that area that Carl was referring to is like a deck that serves a couple of units on the first residential level.
Right, right, right.
That, also the roof of the park, buried fitness center.
Fitness center, correct.
I'm just, also, just to clarify, on the issue of the setback line along Horn Road, my drawings that we just looked at, I just, those are drawings that I did for our June 1st meeting and where I had taken an entire bay out of the Pomona. So, that setback line is actually further back than the frontage line of the buildings. And that's not new. It's just, I, I just kept that particular drawing. I think we've acknowledged that the setback line aligned with the fronts of the buildings on Horn Road is the one that we're more interested in, not as dramatic as what I showed.
Oh, the, the residential setback is approximately 15 feet off the, you know, the street edge, the street right-of-way. That's the right-of-way there. So, 15 feet is, you know, roughly right in here. I think if I go back, you can see it here. This is what it would look like on the upper levels as well. So, you're, the board is actually requesting that this, these setbacks be, you know, fairly dramatically increased, and this is coming from Steve's comment just now, fairly dramatically increased as well on these upper levels. So, if this is, if this is the residential setback coming down the street here, 15 feet off the right-of-way, you're talking about yet another, you know, five, 10, 15 feet in on the upper levels.
Peter?
Yes.
On the third and fourth?
Yeah.
I, I think... Yeah, just to clarify, because I think Mark just summarized what Sammy had said is that on the retail level...
I understand.
And the second level, we come up to the setback of the houses. Forget the 15 feet. Let's call it the setback of the houses. Then you step back for the third level and you step back again for the fourth. That's what we're asking for, okay?
And you know, justification is we don't want a tunneling effect on Horn Road.
Right, right.
Which is also a reason for the number two on this drawing, where you take two units out so that not only you provide sun down for the lower level, but once again you are, you are opening up that view down the road. It's not, it's not simply an arbitrary decision. It has lots of benefits for both people who live on Horn Road and for people who are going in and out of the development.
And let me just add from, from a design perspective, the idea of setting back the third and fourth floors, what I imagine is not that that would simply mean eliminating units on one side of the corridor, but that the units facing Horn Road on the lower floors would be larger units and the ones upstairs would be smaller. And that might, it might be accomplished not just by looking at those units, but by sort of, you have some very large units in the middle of that building that could be made narrower by a few feet. So, it's not my assumption that these setbacks cost units, but it would reduce the size of some units. That's the way I think you can solve that problem.
So, to get back to Carl's point about the sun, you know, the, the actually, we, we've proposed here to cut this back, you know, as I said, 20 feet away from the Horn Road. Road face, so that that angle of the sun, as you say, would be completely maintained one story lower than what is proposed now. So basically now this is a sun cutoff line here, so now it'd be, it'd be taking, taken down a whole story. It would, it would really bring quite a bit more sunlight into that, into that space.
Peter, how does that compare to what we had proposed?
So the only difference is you're proposing to take this entire thing off and we're proposing to leave a small mass on, on the side of that building just so we can maintain one unit as, as opposed to two.
Can you just show that right sketch of the fence?
Right there.
Just about, right.
Yep. May I go on to the next issue? Yep, sure.
If I actually could back up one slide-
Sure, no problem at all, bro.
So that would be number one.
Yep.
This slide before this. One of the things that I like about what the working group has suggested, which a lot of us are sitting for the first time tonight, is that I'd like to go forward, I can stay on this number one. The idea of a tower on the corner of Belmont and Common Street is just exactly the opposite from what I think the spirit that we're trying to create as we emphasize the corner at Tropello and Common. That this corner should be de-emphasized, and that's why I would say not only to get rid of that four-foot floor level, but also to get rid of the tower of the corner. I think the tower of the corner is going in just exactly the wrong direction for how we'd like to see the massing of the site boards.
I've actually heard mixed opinions about this tower, so it was the first I'd heard that it was actually not liked by the board, so I, I think if that is the-
We, we've, we've been very consistent about, about not, about there not being four stories of any in the Highland Building. And this is essentially a four-story tower, so I don't think it's a new piece of information.
In any case, the, the tower itself is, is something that we did discuss in the working session and, you know, described it in, as, as a kind of gateway into Belmont coming over the hill from, from Watertown. And it, it didn't seem to raise objections, so I, I'm just surprised to hear that and will certainly take that into consideration.
Well, Peter, the other thing about the Highland is-
Yep.
That in our conversations in the working group, one of the salient points of the Highland Building is that it was three stories on Belmont Street. And we thought that that would make it feel, you know, and also additional space between it and the existing house to the-
Right, right.
But that we thought that having it three stories on Belmont Street would make it fit in more to the, you know, kind of the physical texture of the, of the whole commercial neighborhood there. However, what we're, through discussion tonight, we're getting at is that it's really three and a half stories, not including the tower. Simply because the first level is four feet above adjacent grade. So, so the representation that the Highland Building is three stories on Belmont Street, it's really not, it's three and a half stories. I mean, I think we need to be clear on what we're talking about. We have consistently said, three stories on Belmont Street, that that seemed palatable. And forget the tower for a second, which I agree with Carl, it adds mass and volume for no apparent reason other than to decorate the corner. I think that that projection above street grade to four feet, you know, adds volume and mass that we really hadn't backed on. So that's something to consider, we need to deal with it.
Even in the original design, there's always been that, that, it's not really even a half-story, that third story there. And it's just a function of the grade, you know, there's no way that you can come in off Horn Road and have an underground garage and make all these numbers add up without having it pop up a little bit above the sidewalk there.
Peter, maybe that's just, you just figured before, but can you give back, even though some of the legends of confusion?
The, the elevations that Peter had prepared before, now, they, they come with the caveat that these have changed even before what you saw this evening. We changed these back, these, these are part of the original applicant, the second round of the change of the building of the Highland. So, but I think it's instructive as far as what the building appears to be on Belmont Street.
Excuse me, Mark, are those Eric's drawings of the Highland? Okay, just to be clear.
While you're looking at that and giving us some thought, why don't we, in the interest of time, move on to the Winslow so you can get an idea where our ideas are there? We can certainly come back to the issue of, of that lower area, so.
Just before we leave this particular slide, I just want to point out that the height of this, I think when you see it in context with the neighboring unit and certainly in context of, of other buildings in there, including across the street, which sit higher, will not appear dramatically higher than anything else around and actually will fit in. We hope to be able to show that to you. So, last item is the Winslow. The board has discussed and requested that we completely eliminate the top floor of the Winslow. We like to keep some kind of roof on this building to give it, to give it a, an attractive style. As you know, we've had this three-peak idea. It's, it's hard to maintain that with, with what we're proposing, which would be a half-story. Under the town's definition, a half-story, as you probably know, is 60% of the floor below or less. Everything's under the roof and you'd use dormers. So the idea here would be, we're going to put a roof in, we hope anyways, and in that space, we'd like to propose to put about six units that would fit in completely under the roof, that would be there in any case. And it actually would probably come out to be a little bit lower than the peaks that were proposed before. And that's my last slide, so any comment on that?
Okay. And Peter, what would be the overall height of that building, to, to the top of that roof?
I will just recall from memory that this was about 44, 45 feet to the, to the ridge line.
With those gable ends, are these, are those-
So the, these are reduced gable ends, that would just be up to the third story. And that, what you're seeing here is a dormer, just like this, but it's inside profile. Yep.
And, and have you been able to compare it with the height of the building, the commercial building across the street on Williston? You know, because the concern of the working group was always that we wanted a pyramid up to the Pomona with the fourth story.
That's what the purpose of this is, right?
Didn't want this to overshadow the-
So what we're trying to develop here is a projection on the side, which is shown in the plans that we have now, it'll be right here. And that, that has a, has a two-story plus a gable effect, which is consistent with what's across the street. So we've also brought this roof line down dramatically, as we always had before with the original three-peak idea, so that, you know, the way that all these buildings relate is, and we'll show you this, of course, in context more, is to step down to two-story with a gable and then step up to this half-story at the, at the top level of the, of the Winslow. And I think we, you know, we'd want to say that this, this has a very minimal effect on the overall development. I mean, I think if we were to not be able to have this, we would have to seriously consider not having, you know, an attractive roof style like this and probably look more seriously at like a flat roof or something like that.
And what, what would the height be if you didn't have that half a story?
Well, if we just had a flat roof in there, you'd be about, about 37 feet, I think, but I'd have to check that. Yeah, about 37, 38 feet. So all the units in here would step back at least 10 feet from the edge, so it'd be a reduced footprint. That's how we get to the 60%. It's actually, this particular little diagram that you have right here is about 55% of the floor below.
Now, now with the dormers, won't it really look like a four-story building?
Uh, no, I think, I think this is a very traditional pattern for a half-story, where you see, you see units that are tucked up on the roof and-
But you will have four levels of windows.
True. But that, those windows are set back, you know, about 10 feet and, and actually more probably. And they're, they're on a roof plane, which is sloped away from you. So, you know, the primary mass that you're going to see is this three-story part in here. This is the roof, buildings have roofs, they have dormers, but it doesn't necessarily appear as a four-story. It's the same thing Steve was talking about before with the mansard, that it, that tends to, to bring the eye down to the mass of the main building and not really perceive it as a four-story. I mean, if we, if we came in here and you just imagined this as, as a facade wall, the same as what's below, certainly you would say, wow, that's a four-story. But putting it under the roof gives you, you know, kind of a, a way to, to clothe that in a way that, that makes it look like, like it's just a natural part of the roof, natural part of the building that's available, it's available space up there in the attic, if
It's worth reminding the board that, that the roof that's been superimposed on that drawing is the second iteration of that building already. The, the original building as submitted with the application had larger gables on each one at the end. So during the process already, before we went into the working sessions, the building had been reduced, and it is now. The building consistently through this process has been complimented as to its appearance vis-à-vis the square itself, and particularly now with regard to the public space behind it, it will be, its interaction with that.
Steve, do you, you know, the working group's recommendation was not to have that half a story, so it would be a true three-story building rather than a three and a half-story building, reduced from what was a four-story building initially. Can you comment, what do you think about a height of 45 feet?
Well, first of all, I do think the way the town measures height, and different towns do it different ways, on a sloped roof is you measure the height halfway up the roof. So, you know, although that building may be 45 feet high, the measurement for zoning purposes would probably be-
Forty.
Forty, okay. What I think about this, I mean, this, this building and its scale and its look right now reminds me of a lot of the old schoolhouses that we have been renovating for senior housing mostly through the years, and in many of them, they have big pitched roofs on them, and we go up there and say, wow, look at all this found space, we can put units up there. And I think the question that, you know, the board and the working group and the neighborhood needs to face is, if you want a three-story building and you want it to be three stories and put a flat roof on it, that's one look. Is that, you know, is that consistent with the look of Belmont or Cushing Square? If you want a pitched roof on the building, which most traditional-looking buildings have, and it can be just a bunch of trusses up there and a bunch of wasted screens, or as the developers are rightly suggesting, if we're going to have a roof like that, we could have units in there. And then the further question is, this is the first time we've seen this simplified version of a roof that meets the definition of a half-story, does this, is this a more attractive roof than the previous iteration of it? And, you know, this is the first time we've seen this, and I think it bears more discussion, but I don't, I don't know how many people would prefer to see a three-story building with a flat roof on it just to say, okay, the building is three stories and we're done.
No, but my question is, if it's a three-story building, say with a gable roof, or some kind of a sloped roof, maybe rather than being 45 feet, I mean, again, it's difficult to put in perspective without knowing the heights.
Well, there's, there's another question. I mean, you can put a low-sloped roof on it, which in my opinion is always the developer's kind of low-budget way out, to put a four and 12 slope on it, and so that way it sheds water and you don't have to worry about the problems of a flat roof. But it doesn't create, you know, those are the kinds of roofs personally, as a design consultant, I don't like to see. I think a steeply pitched roof is a more attractive roof, it says more about shelter, and it creates the opportunity for creating space in there. But, you know, then it becomes more of a, you know, it's, it's difficult question of what's the right scale and what's the impact? This, this building is on the north side of the site, it is not going to shade Horn Road, you know, is it, is it going to create additional shadow impacts on Tropello Road? Does that matter? I don't know. I, I think what they're suggesting within the context of a sloped roof on the building, it makes sense to try to make use of that space in some fashion.
This may be simple minded, but I think we not only have to think about height, but also width in this circumstance. This is not just higher than everything in the neighborhood, it's also three times wider than everything in the neighborhood. And so the question of whether you put dormers facing Williston has a very large effect, not just the dormers on Tropello, but do you put dormers all the way around and then does it really look like a traditional design, or does it look like a, a very, very large building next to two and a half-story houses that are quite small? And, and I think that's part of the concern here, it's not, it's not just height, it's the combination of height and width.
I think the issue of the dormers on the Williston side is something that we could address, and, you know, we haven't really haven't looked at all sides of this building, obviously, but, but it's, it's an interesting point, and I, I think it's something that, you know, we could look at fairly easily and, and see if, you know, I understand your point, is, is to, if you're going to have dormers, perhaps have them just on two sides or three, but keep that, that street side, the Williston side, without dormers in order to give the impression of a, a true attic up there. And it's valuable.
There's also discussion in earlier iterations, considering the Williston side, at one point there was a fairly simple, just a simple hip. And I think we talked about adding sub-gables or dormers on the Williston side to break down what was otherwise just a very large expansive roof, to give it some scale. And also, I mean, in the, as the design evolved, the shape of this building got simpler, but we suggested, you know, a bump out on the Williston side, and you can see it there lightly, as well as one on the back, so that the building didn't have the simple rectangular shape to sort of give it some articulation.
That's the last of our slides.
I, I, I guess, what would you like, what would you like us to do from here?
Oto approves, fine. Absent that, let's, let's put this back in context.
Yes.
Okay. We spent a lot of time as a working group on the site plan, and with the exception of the, the corridor down Pomona, our sense is that we're there and we've achieved a lot of the design issues that Icon had pointed out originally. And we ended up with a better design at the site than we started. We went through the same iteration with the building, and the buildings overall have shrunk in some fashion. And where we are really is, is putting aside the Pomona issue on both sides of the development, and we need some guidance from you as far as whether we can make some changes. The Highland Building, through the working sessions, until we issued those plans, until this week, the Highland, striking the top floor of the Highland was not part of what we talked about in the working session. We talked about reducing, but never striking. That was new as of this week. What you see is a response to that in some fashion. We've talked again and again about the Winslow building, we've shrunk it down through the process, and what you see here is a compromise to try to achieve what seems to be a concern not founded in shadows, not founded in design specifically, but simply a concern that there's too many buildings at four stories. And I think this is, at its bare essence, a compromise. It's a three and a half-story building, it's area within a roof, and the, the entire site benefits from that kind of handsome roof that helps. What we need to know in order to go any further with developing these so you can get a better grasp of them, is whether they are, in their core, potentially acceptable to the board. Because if the boards have a mindset that it doesn't really matter what you show us, you're going to have to take off the top floor of the- you're gonna have to take off the top floor of the Highland, there's no sense preparing all these documents to show you what it looks like. Because what we're telling you is, it's gonna look like a three-story building from Belmont, we described it, we can show you what we have described, be able to show that. What we need is guidance from you, as to whether these compromises, which are the only four things that are keeping us from achieving something we've been working on for six months, are generally acceptable to you, that we should flush them out so we can show you what they are, bring them to you at your meeting on July tenth, have you make a determination that we have achieved where we need to be, a consensus on size, scale, and mass, and move on to the other parts of the development.
Can I have a thought?
Please.
Mark, I guess I would, I would, uh, describe the past a little differently, in going back before you were involved. Uh, we think we have said nothing but, that the Highland would be three stories and no more, and the idea that suddenly, in these last couple of weeks, or a couple of months, that you've gotten a new direction, that the Highland should not be more than three stories, I think doesn't fit with, with our meeting minutes that go back for two years and through several other architects, before you became involved.
If, if I might.
Yeah, and, and let me just make one correction. I've always expressed reservation in the working group sessions on that top floor.
Let me, and let, and let me clarify. When I talk about the working session, and I talk about what we tried to address, most specifically what I note, is that the comments that came from Icon, as far as revisions that were required to the plan, the markup, didn't show a reduction in the Highland. It did not.
And it also, it also showed a twenty-six-foot reduction in the Pomona, and a public area, okay, which you got back. We're willing to give you that, okay? We are, you know, in, in line with the setback of the residences.
We're making compromises.
We're making compromises.
I'm not arguing that we're not making compromises.
And so, the compromise was, since that would create additional retail traffic and density and congestion, that that top level of the Highland, which to me, I mean, I agree with Carl, I've, I've expressed reservation on that tower. Now, maybe even our consultant didn't agree with my reservation on that tower, okay, but...
The, the tower isn't worth our discussion at this time of the evening.
Right, but, but...
Residential use of the top floor of the Highland, how it appears from Belmont Street, how we can make the changes to make it appear in concert with what has been described as the concerns.
Okay. I think, from what I hear, as I hear the residents here, I think the Highland, that top floor, is a very charged topic among the residents. So, I think for you to compromise by giving up the top floor of the Highland, I think you make your changes to the, uh, Pomona, as suggested by the working group, and then that only leaves open the Winslow, if I'm correct. Is that, is that the final topic?
Horn Road side of, of the Pomona, that's the, Horn Road side of...
We, we talked about that, we talked about that. That would be setback, okay? To follow the line of the residences, you could have, uh, first and second, first retail, second residential, setback, and then that leaves us with the Winslow. And then the Winslow, you know, I, I am, I am willing to hear the argument that we wanna make use of dead space and, and good architectural design, okay? But my only concern is, is that going to be too massive in light of the other buildings on the other side, on the other side of Williston, and, and the residences, residences in the back? That, that's been my concern with that building all along. And, and I think you heard, for the sake of disclosure, I think Andy and I's position, all along in the working group, was that that would be a three-story building. I'm not saying you couldn't have a, a sloped roof on it, okay? But my concern is, in order to add that half-story, if you're adding additional height, if you could, if you could keep that, three stories, our definition of three stories is thirty-six feet to the middle of, of, of a sloped roof, okay? So, if you could somehow stick within that height... No?
It, it, it strikes me that we're, we're trying to meet a standard that, that's, that's not consistent with trying to come up with an appropriate design. I mean, simply achieving a numerical number, regardless of what it appears to be, it, that doesn't, it, it's nice for this evening, but once it's built, it's, nobody's gonna know we did it, and that we achieved anything. It, I, I think it has to get back to what this is all about, size, scale, and mass, and what appropriate design is, you know? From, from the day we, we had this first meeting, people have complimented the way that the Winslow looked. It's, when you talk about its relation to its building, it, you have to remember, it has to have a relation now to the Pomona. It has to have a meaningful relation to the new building it's gonna have as a sister building, so...
I agree. I agree. What would the height of the Pomona be, Peter?
Uh, that's about, uh, forty, uh, forty-seven.
Okay, so two feet difference?
Forty-seven.
Two feet.
Yeah, he's at forty-five with the Winslow.
Yeah.
And then forty-seven, it's...
You're comparing a, a flat roof to a slope? I mean, they're apples and oranges.
But this, from, from the building point of view, it's four, I think, I think it's forty feet. So, the big point of view is weight, doesn't it, whereas if the, uh, is actually, whereas with the Pomona, because of the mansard, the flat roof's a great between the sloped part and the flat part, and that's naturally what's higher. So, you have to see the design side by side.
No, I agree. I mean, we do need to see that, I agree. How do others feel?
One, just one other thing, is, um, during the working group, and certainly well before that, we've been constantly speaking about what percentage of the development is fourth floor. Do you have a sense of where you are in your proposal?
This?
No? Okay, is that's important? I mean, we've been talking about it, some of your prior proposals had those percentages in the working group study sessions, um, but I think that, you know, we've been consistent in the working group. Four stories at the Pomona, for the, you know, at a, you know, for a major portion of the Pomona, three stories at the Winslow, and three stories at the Highland. The Highland is a little tricky because of the grade change, understandably, and what one defines as three stories there is all relative to where you are on the sidewalk. And so, that's a unique, you know, animal, and we can deal with that. But, the fact is, is that the Highland is really three-and-a-half stories at Belmont Street, and, and, and that's, and that's still an issue that we need to deal with. Uh, on the site plan, while you have done a lot on the site plan, you know, you now understand what we're asking you on the Pomona, uh, Horn Road side. We also have consistently said that those six parking spaces at Williston, at the head of the new open space, are not acceptable, because they don't allow for pedestrian movement down Williston toward the rest of Cushing Square. Um, we really don't want those parking spaces there. Uh, that should be part of the streetscape. So, just, it's a minor issue on the site plan. Um, but I think the percentage of fourth-floor space is gonna be telling. We never expected, from the very beginning of this project, when the Cushing Square overlay district was being written, and it was stated over and over again, and believe me, I've seen it in reviewing the two thousand and six, uh, town meeting where I presented it, that the only portion of this project that was supposed to have four floors was a piece of the Pomona. A piece of it. And now, even to date, what we're coming up with is four stories, a piece of four stories, essentially, on three buildings. I think that, you know, we have issues with it. Um, I, we've asked you, we've given you the, the peer review, you know, comments, we gave you explicit direction of which units and which, or which masses to remove, because again, we're not really dealing with the number of units, we're dealing with the mass bulk and, and, and height. Um, and yet, what you came back with expands the Pomona footprint beyond where we said, doesn't set it back, step it back on Horn Road, you know, significantly. Um, you do more work to the Highland, the Highland's a little better, with the exception of the half-floor above grade. And the Winslow, you know, is a three-and-a-half-story building, not a three-story building, it still includes a portion of it that's a fourth floor. I think that's why the percentage of fourth floor across the entire footprint is a important calculation that we will need to see. Um, I don't know. The board, you know, it's up to them.
Well, those were certainly our recommendations, and, you know, we're a board, so...
I have a question. Did the, uh, the Winslow, the original fourth floor of, of this design, was a complete fourth floor, and, and you're suggesting that it could reduce from a hundred percent to sixty percent of this half-floor version, correct?
It was a slightly, slightly less, uh, four-floor, but, 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 yeah.
You have, you took a... Yeah, now, that it's a four-floor, that it reduces sixty percent of the section of the floors. And that's what, from the bridge line, actually drops off onto the balconies of the floor, so it's not up to the street. Just to give you a mistake.
Okay, let, I mean, let's give some direction. Any thoughts on the Highland?
Just, just something. Um, one of the technical issues that were sort of minor tweaks that came about as a result of introducing, of moving Horn Road back to its original alignment and creating retail there, was that the architects pointed out that that would allow them to drop the overall elevation of the Winslow building, Highland building, excuse me, the Highland building down, because the more, the more the building is moving towards Trepello Road lower, that base elevation is getting. So, the elevations that you were looking at, Carl, in particular, where you were seeing a half, or somewhat less than a half-story exposed on Belmont Street, actually predate the, the potential to lower the overall elevation of the building. And what I think the architects can do, if you're looking at buildings that are three-and-a-half or so, that are at four stories, you actually have a two-story building, uh, base, basement. I think they could take that, they could stay with it in three-story building, without taking a story off, simply by lowering the building into the ground, if you are saying that a three-story building is acceptable. I think they can do that without losing the story. There are other issues around...
Okay, but you haven't addressed the density issue, then. You're, you're, you're preserving the same density.
Well, but what I would add, what, what, I would add, what Steve was saying, is that you start with three real floors, not three and a half, and you step down as you start going down Common Street, and you don't start stepping up until you cross Horn Road and you hit the Pomona.
I, I think they, what they've shown tonight is that they're willing to step that building down along Common and around Horn, I think what they're uncomfortable with is eliminating that whole top floor, which I don't think is necessary if they bring the level that faces Belmont Street closer to grade. I mean, you know, if it's a foot or two above grade, okay, I mean, you're looking at something that's four feet, and you're saying that's a half-story, I don't, they, I think they can solve that problem without losing that entire top floor.
Steve, I, I agree with you. I think if that, instead of four feet sticking up on Belmont Street, if that were more just like a regular foundation course, then it would look like a three-story building, and we really wouldn't have much of an issue with that part. And I think that they're stepping down toward Horn Road in their new proposed, yeah, the bottom sketch there. I think that's more effective. It's definitely more effective for allowing sunlight into the south-facing plaza across the street on Horn Road, and it, it's better for residents on Horn Road as they look to Common Street. Um, so I, I find that effective, if they could lower the Belmont Street elevation a bit, so that it looks more like a three-story building, I think it's much more effective.
Well, I think you're right in that, sort of, the stepping on Horn Road is both something to reduce the mass and the scale as it leads you into Horn Road, and also, as I think Peter pointed out, it creates a better sun angle toward that space.
Across the way.
Chasing to the Pomona. But again, the other aspect of the Highland is that it's designed as a mansard, so it reads as a two-story building with a mansard roof. It's that extra half-story poking about in the ground that appears to be the issue here.
Is that my turn?
Yes.
We've addressed toward the Horn Road, I think, to try to achieve the, the reduction in the mass you're looking for. The concern, without being necessarily bound to it, but we can look at trying to, for lack of a better term, drive down the Belmont Street, so it becomes more three. But, the building is going, as it goes from Belmont Street toward Horn Road, it's gonna definitionally have some section you call a four-story, in your bylaw. I don't think, I, I didn't have the benefit of all the history, I only have the benefit of your bylaw, as to what was ultimately approved by town meeting, which allowed four stories in certain circumstances, which, which is here. I think, as opposed to simply relying upon what the calculation will be that we will figure out is, as to what's the fourth floor, it's whether to think about the height of the building meets the design criteria that the bylaw talks about, to make sure that bad things don't happen as a result of height. And that section of the Highland building that we're talking about that would constitute a fourth floor in your bylaw, we don't think has any of those deleterious impacts that the bylaw talks about avoiding, if you're going to have a special permit that allows a fourth floor. And I think that's a better analysis than simply saying, it's four, we told you back in two thousand X, you couldn't have four, therefore it has to come out. That's where we are, is trying to get to past these three areas that would bring us to closure in size, scale, and mass. We, it sounds like we can design in some fashion, now that we understand a little bit better the goals on the Pomona, we can push it back to where you want it to be, we understand that now. It sounds like you're open to the idea of looking at a half-story within the Winslow, but you, before you say yes, you kinda wanna have a better feel for what that actually means, and, and not be bound by it. That's fair, that we owe you that. This strikes me as it's becoming a bright line, it's simply, you can't have it because it's four. And that's just bad design, it's, it's not good design, second of all, and what, what is most important is, it's not the reason why we shouldn't be able to get to yes.
The, saying you can't have a fourth floor is something that Andy, speaking to town meeting, represented to the entire assembled town meeting members. It's not an arbitrary decision. We said, we thought that it might be able to go to four stories on the corner of Common and Trepello, and we have said that consistently from two thousand and six till tonight.
And with all due respect, your bylaw speaks under what conditions you would allow a fourth floor, without regard to what adjoining fourth floors there are?
If it, if it acceptably met the mass, height, and density of the surrounding neighborhood. And what we're trying to say is that four stories in the Highland does not acceptably meet the adjoining neighborhood. It's really that simple, and we tried to say that in town meetings, so that people could know what they were going to get, and we've said it ever since.
You know, Mark, just one thing on that. You know, the Highland is a unique building because of the grade change, and we understand that. And, you know, I think that if you could make the building three stories, convincingly three stories, and not three and a half, on Belmont Street, and then due to the configuration of the site and the topography, some portion of it, you know, on Common Street would appear as fourth story, while on Horn Road and on Belmont Street, it would never look like more than three, okay? I think that's a site-specific decision that's, that could be, you know, just from my opinion, could be acceptable, be due to the, you know, kinda configuration of the land. It's kinda almost the, the lay of the land issue. However, so, if the board, in my opinion, were to, you know, say, okay, having a fourth-floor component on the Highland, you know, a minor fourth-floor component on the Highland i- is okay because of this lay of the land issue, then I don't see how there's any way we could allow a fourth-floor component on the Winslow. I just don't. I mean, I, I just don't, because why, the whole intent of this was not to have three, four-story buildings. We've represented it that way at town meeting, we've represented it con... if you did a pitch roof, it would be wasted space or, but adding units up there does add density, traffic, and parking requirements that wouldn't be there, that wouldn't be there if that was just a roof. So, those are the issues. Um, you know, w- w- we keep saying the same thing and, you know, y- y- you know, you guys have made some significant adjustments, but on these things, we, I think we've been pretty consistent about this, Mark.
And, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that you are, believe me. I, I have the utmost respect for the effort that this board has put into this process. So, so don't take my comments in, in any fashion against that. I was, I was with you till the end, I guess. Because when you suggest that the reason you have to eliminate any housing on that additional floor of the Winslow is because of traffic, I'd suggest that that's premature. Until we know what we have for the units and we run it through the analysis of traffic and parking as to the needs and everything else, you may determine despite size, scale, and mass, you know, we haven't talked about number of units, unit mix, or anything of that nature. And we understand that's all right still. What we're asking for is the opportunity to design in that space. And it seems to me, without talking with Chris or Peter in any fashion, you're putting us in a difficult position of potentially losing one of the things people have at least had some uniformity as to what they like about the project because you can't get any value out of it. And I just don't know if that has real meaning.
Right. But, but it's not just that. It is about mass. And for example, the bylaw, you know, sets a maximum height for the four-story piece at forty-eight feet. Um, if the Winslow is forty-five feet to the ridge, forty feet to the measurable center of slope, which would be the effective zoning height, it just doesn't seem significant enough a difference between the forty-eight foot max. That's a mass issue. Now, it affects units and it affects traffic and parking and go right down the line, but it's predominantly and essentially a mass issue. And I think that that's what Sammy was getting at when he was asking about can we make it live within the thirty-six feet?
Yes, and let me read a criteria, okay? The board will consider departure from the architectural scale of buildings on a budding and nearby premises should be eliminated, okay? Except where the departure would serve a town purpose. And, you know, to me, it just, we're going from a, at most, two and a half story building across the street up to what, up to clearly a three and a half story building appearing like a four story, up to a full four story and then going around the corner and ending up with a building with another fourth story on it. And that is just not the intent of this bylaw. That's what I'm trying to say.
One possible way of summing up the Highland question is to say very straightforwardly that the units that face Horn Road, retail or residential, will not be more than three stories above Horn Road. And then how you get from there up to Belmont Street, I think the architects here are fine figuring out how to do that. But if we say it's not the first five feet that's, that's three stories high, it's the whole first unit back to the corridor, add a minute and then you, you work it out from there.
No, and I think they're willing to do that. I think you are willing to do that on, on, on Horn Road. The, the only question, Carl, was that top story because of, of all three buildings, the Highland seems to be the one which, which most people have complained about as being too dense. And, and I can see why. You know, we didn't address what the building would look like from the perspective of the residents along Belmont Street in the back. Will they see a four-story building or will they see a three-story building?
See two, three, and four.
Okay, and I, and I think that's the issue with the board's story.
Maybe I missed something. What I, what I thought, because I'm actually getting a little excited, but what I heard was three stories at Horn, three stories at Belmont. Let the architects figure out what happens in between.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean five stories in between.
Some of that's going to get, some of that under the bylaw is going to constitute four. If what you're saying is, if it says, if it has a four in it under the bylaw, I'm not going for it. I don't want to do it. I mean, I'll be as candid as I can be. I don't want to keep going and trying to get something they can't get. I think we can, if, if those are the parameters, three stories on Horn, three on that one, make them come together so it makes sense with the building that, that looks appropriate in the town that you're probably developing in. And you're open to some of that being considered a fourth story but not having an adverse impact on the neighborhood. That's at least something we can go ahead and design. That's what some people say, uh, they're talking about. If I'm not, who says, that's my point, but some people want to get through.
I've been thinking about that half-story issue on, on the Belmont Street side. And, and one of the things that occurs to me is that now that we have this municipal and commercial ramp sloping down as, as the, I think if you go back to this, um, as, as the building, as the, as the parking lot wraps around, this actually allows us to drop this end of the building down a little bit so that, you know, there's a fitness club right above this, that, you know, maybe there's some steps down and we could eliminate the, the entire half, so little half-story, if you will.
And what will the height be at its maximum point if you do that?
So, you're talking about, um, roughly, roughly thirty-three, thirty-four feet, something like that.
Thirty-four feet to the top. Thirty-four feet to the bottom.
Okay, and then as, from, from the lowest grade to the highest point, what's the highest conceivable height?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take a little down. The whole building would drop down. So, you know, where, where, where this all comes out is something we still have to look at. But, uh, you know, you, yeah, you're going to add, at some point in there, you're going to add another eight to, to nine feet before we step down again. You know, in other words, there's a little, as Mark was saying, there's a little bit of face that will be four stories in order to make this step up.
About what height?
So, I'm going to say forty-two, forty-one, maybe a little more, forty, forty, forty-three?
Back to the midpoint of the roof or?
To the top of, to the break of the mansard.
Top floor.
Right, up here, right here. Yeah. There's a, you know, there's a very low slope that goes up behind that. Yeah.
Are we willing to consider the design?
I think, I think Andy's sketch is consistent with what the architect said.
Okay, so your statement was warranted. Okay, okay. I think, I think then the Pomona we're in agreement on.
Pomona, we can, Pomona, we understand what you're trying to achieve, we have to figure out what that means.
Okay, and, and, okay, and then the Winslow, you know, I mean, I, I have to agree with Andy, you know, remains a, a, a three-story building, in my mind. I think we've given in on the Highland. We've compromised on the Highland. Um, and, uh, at least that's my sense. I don't know how others. Andy's not a voting member, so.
I'd be willing to look at, I'd be willing to look at the elevations. How about, how about this? It's, it's lit, okay? How about keeping an open mind and let us prepare something so you have an idea of what it looks like and we'll try to give it some scope, okay, in context with the neighborhood. Because-
We'd also, we'd also like to see you take a look at the possibility of a generous three-story building for the Winslow, uh, that has some of the characteristics that everyone liked in terms of the massing and the roof lines and so on. Uh, and, and, and I, I, as a voting member for this particular case, um, I agree with Sammy that a forty-five foot building from one end to the other, I'm going to have a hard time.
Okay, so the question's to reevaluate the Pomona. Okay, where we are.
Could you go to your site plan of the Pomona and if you don't mind, Sammy, I'm just going to-
Sure.
Yeah, you can do that one.
Hey, will you take the mic?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Um, I think what we're trying to say, Mark and Chris, is you're going to live the first floor with the setback of the houses up there. So, the first floor will come to wherever that line is that aligns with those houses up on Horn Road. It will step back after the second floor. So, the first floor and the second floor can be at that line. At the third floor, it steps back a gracious amount, not just a token amount, not five feet, but something more significant, and then step back again to the fourth floor. That's what we've said. I think that summarizes what we said before and hopefully that should clarify.
Is that correct, Steve?
Is that what we said?
I'm not clear on whether you wanted two step backs or just a step back for the third and fourth floor.
I think we'll listen to you on that.
Yeah, no, I think what we said was the footprint would be pushed back so that it would align with, with the setback of the residences.
Right, although, by the way, I don't think it should just follow that line. I think the way-
Right, crenellated, yeah.
Okay, okay, agreed.
As opposed to just-
Agreed. And then they could have a second story residential on top of that footprint and then it would be, it would step back, meaningful step back, at the third floor and then it could go up again at the fourth floor.
So, that's just one step back. That's fine.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
I think we talked about one step back.
That's the professional opinion I'm, I'm board with.
That's, that's what I thought we were talking about.
Okay, then, then-
We could use that step back for decks and balconies.
You could use it for decks and balconies.
Wanted to step it back a second time.
That too. Okay, then what I would suggest is, I think the things that are very important, okay, for, what I would like to do is put closure to this at our next meeting, July tenth. We will get over this issue and you will, you, you will, uh, get the direction of the board and we will move in, move on to, to the next phase of our discussion, okay? But, I think what you need to come to us with is we need to see, of course, revised plans. We need to see elevations, okay? We need to see street elevations relative to other buildings, uh, in the square. I think our consultant has, has also asked for some 3D visualizations and, um, you know, if, if, if certainly a, a part of this consideration would be number of units that you're talking about and relationship between retail, commercial, to residential, that ratio. And, um, and ideally, we would not like it a day before the hearing or the, or the night of the hearing. So, if we could have something that we could post on the website a few days in advance, that, that, that would be, that would be ideal. You, you know, even if it's done in pieces, that, I think that would be helpful. Okay. I've resisted resident comment, but we will take a few, bearing in mind that, that, that it is late. Uh, Mike?
I'm Don Becker. I live on Horn Road and I appreciate the direction and the, and the effort that you're making and it does seem to me, uh, that you, you, that you have addressed things in a positive manner. However, one thing that concerns me is what I heard in the last twelve or fifteen minutes with regard to the, that would be the south side of Horn Road, um, on the Highland building. And I thought that I heard earlier in the evening that you were going to suggest that, that there be a three, three-story building, but that when, when the Highland building meets Horn Road, that it would be scaled down to two stories. But then, about twelve minutes ago, I think I heard it suggested that it would be okay for the Highland building to be three stories, um, right up to where it, it meets Horn Road. And I would, I would ask that you consider, um, a setback which would also reflect the setback on the north side of Horn Road, uh, going from two stories on Horn Road on that side of the street up to three stories and then four stories as, as, as the, uh, as the Pomona building, uh, approaches Trapella Road.
Okay. Steve, what did our, our working session show? Does it, is it like two and a half stories because of that retail area?
That's consistent, what Don is describing is consistent with page fifteen of the handout, which shows a deleting two units on the corner of Horn Road in Common Street.
Um, I'm not sure it is because this is-
This is the one.
It is.
I mean, what we've been, I'm sorry.
Talking about is three stories on Horn Road, but there is a, well, you know, I think we need to look at the elevations. There's the garage, that's a story. And then I assume there are two stories of residential on top of it. That's, that's what we've been talking about. So, that would be three stories, only two of which are residential. The garage entry is there as well.
It's because of the slope. It's because of the slope. But, your, your comment is noted. Your comment is noted.
I think it, it might be a good idea for the board to address this specifically so that the developer and the developer's architect can have direction with regard to that concern. Um, I think that it would be beneficial for both sides of Horn Road to have the same height on Horn Road and then with setbacks going back, uh, as, as has been discussed.
I'm Ian O'Donnell and I live on Belmont Street.
The microphone, ma'am.
I'm Ian O'Donnell and I live on Belmont Street, five seventy-seven, two houses away from where the Highland building will be built. I don't know how we got to the point of even contemplating four stories on any of these three buildings. Nowhere else in Belmont, in Belmont Center, do we have four stories? No. We don't have four stories in Cushion Square, any other place, nor do we, the apartment building maybe, only. And we certainly don't have them in, in Waverly. So, why should we have to put up with the thought of adding four floors in Cushion Square? It's much, much too high and much, much too massive. Also, I would like to address the Highland building because I think that's a very important building as one enters Belmont from Common Street. It is a, an odd lot topologically because it does slant down to Trapella Road. Now, up on Belmont Street, if I heard correctly from Carl, he thought that two floors would be appropriate, which I think possibly would, providing the windows that we saw on a, a presentation a month or so ago with half windows, if-
I'm Anne O'Donnell, and I live on Belmont Street, 577, two houses away from where the Highland Building will be built. I don't know how we got to the point of even contemplating four stories on any of these three buildings. Nowhere else in Belmont, in Belmont Center, do we have four stories? No. We don't have four stories in Cushing Square, any other place, nor do we, the apartment building maybe, only, and we certainly don't have them in, in Waverly. So why should we have to put up with the thought of having four floors in Cushing Square? It's much, much too high and much, much too massive. Also, I would like to address the Highland Building, because I think that's a very important building, as one enters Belmont from Common Street. It is a, an odd lot, topologically, because it does slant down to Tripella Road. Now up on Belmont Street, if I heard correctly from Carl, he thought that two floors would be appropriate, which I think possibly would, providing the windows that we saw on a presentation a month or so ago, half-windows, if, as long as those were eliminated. Obviously, they're for a sports facility for down underground. So that should be definitely all graded to the street, with not those funny windows. And somehow, we should take into consideration what type of windows will be on that building. Otherwise, you're gonna have a solid wall of brick, which I think someone addressed the last meeting in April. So I think we should be thinking, and we should be telling the architects not to go forward with any more drawings of four floors, because the residents don't want four floors, it's much, much too massive. And I think you have to take into consideration too, the fact that, do we have fire equipment that would get to four floors?
Those will all be addressed.
Okay, that was something that crossed my mind.
Okay, your objection to four stories is noted.
Okay, fine.
Any other comments? Okay, yes?
Sam, I, I heard, I'm sorry, at Cassange and School Street in Belmont, I heard you say it, and I would like to reaffirm it, it would be helpful to see a representation that showed the houses across the street on Belmont Street, where you drive up into the basement, and you've got literally three-and-a-half stories above it, I think it's higher than this building, you've got a six-story apartment house on the other corner, you've got an eight-story place next to Brothers Pizza, and all the houses on that side of Tripella Road, the foundations are fifteen feet up in the air, and the buildings are higher than the buildings we're talking about here. I think it can be, do nothing but be informative to the board and help the case of these developers if they would show those masses around the, the building. Thank you.
John Matalman, Seventeen, Poplar Street. Just a question about the HVAC, where they're gonna be located, I'd like to see those included in the drawings if they're on top of the building, so we really see what it will look like visually, we will not deal with any vibration tonight, we've already done that in the previous meeting.
We will definitely address HVACs and noise and vibration, but, but that was not within the scope of this. Okay, yes?
Devin Brown, I live on Horn Road, I'm a town meeting member. I really want to thank the board, I think that was really good input, that's very much in line with how the town feels about this, and I think the consultant as well, you know, I thought the, the input was very relevant. There was a fascinating negotiation with, you know, lots of great negotiating tactics on both sides. I guess I would encourage for the next meeting, for the design team to, a little less, less negotiation, a little more listening, just let's not come back with half of what was discussed, but, you know, let's, let's come back with all of what was discussed, so that we really can get to the end. Because I think, you know, everything that was said is really important to the town, and important to create the best design, so if you could just really listen to what was said, and rather than figure out a way to sort of address things, but not, you know, just, just simply address those, those complaints, because that, then I think the town could really get behind the design and be excited about it. Just one final comment about that fourth-floor element on, and I can never remember the names of these, I'm gonna call it the parking lot building. You know, I, I think the-
You're talking about the Highland?
No, 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 the, the building that's on the parking lot, Winslow, thank you.
Where are the parking lots?
You know, those, those six units in the, in the, in the beltway there, just, let's just consider what it's gonna feel like, looking up, you know, having people looking down from that elevation into the neighborhood, I think that's gonna, you know, that's gonna feel bigger than just having a roof up there. So, you know, although maybe it's not even more massive to have units up there, to have light and windows and, and, you know, visibility, I think that's gonna feel bigger, that's gonna make the whole thing feel bigger, so, you know, I'm not saying that's a showstopper, but let's just consider, you know, how it's gonna feel to have those, those units really up high, looking down on you. But thank, thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, good night, good night.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rush, Horn Road. I have one more little thing, and I hope it doesn't throw a huge wrench into all the great compromising that's happened on both sides, but, I don't even have to look at that, but the, the setback that you're applying to the Pomona on the Horn Road side to be in line with the current residences, I really like that, appreciate that, I think that'll work incredibly well. I'm wondering if on the Winslow Building, AKA the parking lot building, if that same theory or idea can be applied as a setback to the Williston side road of that building, if it'd be in line with the current residential unit? Because if I remember correctly, the designs I saw before, I don't know if I'm really up on the latest iteration, but Williston is a very narrow road, and it's, it will, and it, it does now, because of the municipal parking lot and the need to get to Starbucks as soon as possible, if you come around that corner and you meet someone coming the other way, or maybe that will be initial, an issue figured out down the line, that maybe it will turn into a one-way, I don't know. But it's a narrow street, and I think the building being pulled back on that sidewalk, well, oh, wow, that would be really bad. Okay, we can meet halfway, pull it halfway back. I just think it's a very tight corner to begin with, and if the building's pulled back a little bit, that would help with shadow issues, light issues, density issues, it's just, it's just a thought, because I travel that corner every day of my life, and also the visibility issue of getting around something that's so massive and high, and even three stories is, is, although good for the neighborhood, is still gonna be a dense building, anyway. Set, pulling it back a little bit, that's my question.
My name's Dennis Calhoun, three, four, just thinking was in, you know, about entire presentation.
Go around to the microphone, will you? Go around, yeah, yeah, into it.
That if the planning board and Cushing Square residents are unhappy with a proposal of Cushing Village, of speaking as a resident just outside of Waverly Square, we would be more than happy in Waverly Square to have this village.
Okay, that's off topic, that's, yeah, that's off topic.
That's it, that's it, that's it.
My name is Al Smith, I live on Poplar Street. I want to commend Mr. Starr for his ability to compromise, which was a suggestion I made to him many months ago. I told him the story of Abraham Lincoln, who was a firm believer in the idea of compromise. He would save a tremendous amount of cost, tremendous amount of effort, a tremendous amount of expense, and I want to commend him for that. What I'm asking the board to, to consider, on the Highland Building, if the plan comes back for a three-story or less building, then maybe the board could also give Mr. Starr the Winslow Building with a half-story, a little give and take, to further the compromise. So that's my suggestion.
Okay.
Little give and take.
Okay, thank you, because we are running out of tape time, okay? That said, I would like to thank you, I would like to thank you all for attending. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to our July tenth meeting at, at seven PM, in this room, in the auditorium? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.